Welcome to the October eighth, two thousand and nineteen city council meeting roll call, please.
Mayor Webb.
Here.
Mayor President Omri.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Here.
Please stand for the implication and pledge allegiance.
Sorry.
It's okay.
We have a pastor in the house?
Me.
Councilman LaCarrel.
Pastor.
Let's bow our heads, please. Source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas, to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, can I get approval of the agenda as presented on the revised?
Move approval of the revised agenda.
Support.
Any discussion, dissension? We have an agenda. Special presentations, proclamation to celebrate the two hundredth birthday of Oakland County. Whereas on March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, Oakland County will celebrate its two hundredth birthday, and whereas the bicentennial celebration will include all sixty-two Oakland County communities and numerous events such as the two hundred oak tree plantings, festivals, concerts, and much more. And whereas Oakland County is home to one point two five billion residents within nine hundred and seven square miles. Most model rural suburban, urban communities and schools, as well as eleven colleges and universities prides its heritage as the frontier of freedom key role in the Civil War. Epic too of the auto industry arsenal of the of democracy, pivotal roles with civil rights and union organizations, and home of the titans of industry, entertainment, culture, and polit- policies. And whereas, sorry, politics, and whereas the city of Hazel Park recognizes the significance of Oakland County's bicentennial celebration, and looks forward to participating in many events honoring the outstanding contributions of a county, we urge the citizens of Hazel Park, as well as the businesses, nonprofit organizations, and schools to take part in commemorating this historic endeavor. Now therefore it be resolved, the city Hazel Park proudly joins other sixty-one communities in Oakland County to designate the beginning of the celebration on March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty, the two hundredth birthday of our founding of Oakland County, Michigan. Be it known to all reading the proclamation that this was adopted by Hazel Park on October eighth, two thousand and nineteen. We have a proclamation for the two hundredth birthday. Another proclamation, naming October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month program is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance and early detection of breast cancer. And whereas an estimated three hundred and thirty-five thousand Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year, and one in eight women in the United States will will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of their lifetimes, making it the second most commonly diagnosed form of cancer among American women. And whereas this resolution will highlight the ongoing efforts to raise awareness for breast cancer research, detection, and treatment, it is owed to the forty-two thousand women expected to die in two thousand and nineteen from breast cancer, as well as the three point one million survivors, to do everything possible to support the fight against this terrible disease. Be it known that I, Michael Webb, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park, Michigan. I call upon all citizens and communities to agencies, organizations, and businesses to increase the participation in our own efforts to prevent, treat, and ultimately cure breast cancer. Thank you. And my mother-in-law is a survivor of almost forty years of breast cancer.
Mr. Mayor, my wife is a twenty-five-year-plus survivor of breast cancer, so. So that, and while those two cases, great outcomes happen, we still need to do more research for all kinds of cancer here. As a civilization, I think that's got to be one of our main priorities for the future is to devote our resources to curing this horrible disease that claims so many of our people.
And not only the breast cancer, as any other cancers that we all know someone has gone through and suffered with this terrible debilitating diseases that we've all experienced in our families and friends. It's hard on the families and relationships in trying to be there to support everyone, and that's what we're there for. Help support those in need at the time. And that's what we all need to do, and put aside our own selfishness to be there for those loved ones and friends. Thank you. Move on with the business meeting. Civic announcements, I'd like to open up the floor to civic announcements. Anyone come up for civic announcements?
Hello, my name is Mike McFaul. I'm at fourteen oh five East Madge. I just wanted to congratulate the thirteen entrepreneurs that are sitting over at Frame right now for the Build Institute. These are programs that the Build Institute is putting on for entrepreneurs, and it's for people that are looking to either start a business possibly here in Hazel Park, or they're Hazel Park residents. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements for the audience? Close civic announcements for the audience, civic announcements for council?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just a reminder that next Thursday, the seventeenth, I see that there's three, four historical commissioners here, and nobody spoke up. The museum will be open from six to eight P.M. Forty-five East Pearl, behind Mr. Hitchcock's real estate office. Look forward to seeing everyone.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Close civic announcements, like to open up public discussion. Anyone have any public discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you have several.
We've got a couple slips here. Let me go through the slips, and then we'll have everybody else come up. There's four of them here. Since you're up, coming up, Mr. Hitchcock, you already got a slip in here.
Thank you, Mayor Mike. I, as chairman of the Hazel Park Promise Own, I wanted to come up and give a little information about that. Apparently there was some question by Councilman Holland about service on the community mental health. City manager and I were appointed to the Promise Own by the state legislature. There was two appointments, and Ed and I were appointed to help begin the Promise Own here in Hazel Park. My family moved to Hazel Park before it was Hazel Park, and I can remember my father getting petitions signed at church to make sure we had a vote and start this city of Hazel Park. We've been involved in Hazel Park in many different ways over the years. Three generations of us have served on the school board with Orjo Atkins now serving as our third family member. I'd like to go over the sheet that I handed out to the council. An academic year here, eighty-two percent of the high school seniors are committed to going to college, eighty-two percent. We raised scholarships and money, five point five million dollars for scholarships to help these students get started. Students are enrolled in twenty-six in-state different institutions around. We have fifty-two people who are community mentors, supporting college students. If anybody would like to, we ever volunteer to be a mentor, we need more mentors to help our colleges' students as they begin, especially through the first year. We found that it was very difficult for first-year students to make it, and a lot of them were dropping out. We threw a grant that the Promise Own got from the Palmer Group, a three-year grant. We were able to hire a staff person to physically be talking to every student in college the first two years, to see if they had any problems or questions or help that we could give them. We've even set aside a special fund for emergencies to help students if they need it. So the mentoring program has been very successful, but we still need more people. I think fifty-two volunteers for the first year is very good for our community. I think this makes a difference.
Great.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the UAW Chrysler Training Program. We are the only program in Michigan like this. No other mentoring, no other Promise Own, to my knowledge, in Michigan has a program like this. Let me give you an illustration. I had a family member recently tell me that their student who finished the two-years program started at over seventeen dollars an hour, and after nineteen, three months, he was making now over nineteen dollars an hour, right out of high school. That's an illustration of how the culture of our community has changed with the help of the Promise Own. When I graduated many, many, many years ago, I think there were only eight or nine of us going on to college, approximately three percent of the college graduates. When I see the percentage now at eighty-two percent, it's obviously making a significant difference in our community. This has the promise, in my opinion, to have more effect on changing Hazel Park than anything I've ever seen in the over seventy-eight years that I've been here in town. And I think this is making a difference already in our community, and certainly will help. If kids are going to college and thinking about that, they're less likely to hopefully get into trouble and cause problems in our community. So I think it's a major input into our community. I would like to say that Ed Klobuchar, our first year, talked to the U-Star Foundation, and over the last seven years, eight years, we've got over eight hundred thousand dollars. And as chairman of the board, I can say I doubt this Promise Own would be in effect today if it isn't, if it wasn't for the effect that Ed Klobuchar had as a service member to our community on this zone. And I appreciate you very much, Ed. Ed and I have worked together to get this going as volunteers, and I think it's making a difference already in our community. And in my opinion, again, it's going to have as much effect on changing the culture of our community as anything I've ever seen in our city. Thank you for the opportunity for me to bring you this information and let you know the difference that the Promise Own is already making for our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
It's already having a big effect, Mr. Hitchcock. It's got a lot of young couples moving into the area and wanting to raise families here because it's still affordable to live here.
I'd be happy to mention that. As a realtor, I didn't want to mention that.
I know you did not want to.
Since you did, thank you very much. I've sold a number of houses to families moving in here because they heard about the Promise Own, and they wanted to move into our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
I see it through my business every day where people, new people, new faces coming in, young, young twenty, thirty-year-olds, thirty, really thirty-year-olds settling down and after they've gotten their big person job and wanting to sit down with their family and start kids.
Well, not only that they have kids, but still a lot are moving into it here because they can't afford for their kids to go to college unless there was a program like the Promise Own.
It makes a big difference.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I heard my name mentioned at the beginning, and I'm not sure in why those words were attributed to me. I have been incredibly supportive of the Promise Own. I have expressed some concern about the makeup of the local board with one industry seeming to dominate it. That's the only thing I publicly express concern about. In fact, two years ago, the group I'm with supported the banquet, and I have put my money where my mouth is when it comes to this board. I have seen firsthand students that have come around and achieved and have used the UAW program, and I am incredibly supportive of the Promise Own.
The only two appointments to the board came from the state legislature. The rest of them have come from the original group, or came from the city school board appointed them, and we've added members. In fact, at this point, I think we're one member shy of membership. So we are looking for people, and the last one we, one of the last ones we appointed has been very, very helpful in putting together enough material that is helping us start to promote what we're doing here in the community more. So we, we have added people to the board, and it's, I have never had anybody ask me to be a board member that we haven't appointed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just want you to know that I had no concerns with the state appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I'm glad that Mr. Hitchcock was here to be able to explain a little bit more about the Promise Own. I want you all to know, I raise money for the Promise Own not because it's my baby, but because it is the right thing to do, and because I believe, like Mr. Hitchcock, that this is one of the most important things that I've ever done in terms of my ten-year city manager. If you look at it, we have obtained more than five point five million dollars in scholarship money to support the students in Hazel Park. We've completely changed and transformed this into a college-going culture where every student has the expectation that they will be able to attend college, or attend some sort of a mentorship program, or attend a skilled trades program, and they will have a much better life. This, I think, is the most life-changing thing that, I think Bill agrees with me, that we've ever done.
Right.
So I just want everybody to know, this is why I'm so passionate about it, and this is why I want the Promise Own to be everybody's first best charity here in Hazel Park, because literally we are creating opportunity for children who, or children, they're students, they're young adults, who ordinarily would not have had that type of an opportunity. So I'm proud of it, Bill's proud of it. I'm glad, I hope, all five of you, I want all five of you to understand why I do it, and I want all five of you to be as proud of this thing as I am.
It's a great program.
Yep.
Has been for years. And.
Right. That's, that's one year. We went from getting under three hundred thousand dollars in total Promise Own scholar, in total scholarships from all, not just the Promise.
I remember the first three, four years were tough, and we didn't know, and your board didn't know whether or not you were telling me how it was going to sustain that type of momentum. But we're going to move on. Thank you for everyone. To Michael Allen.
As you look through the pictures.
Let's see the name and address.
Michael Allen, four six one West Mapledale. Just a couple things as you go through the pictures. My mom is a twenty-five-year survivor of breast cancer, and my son has taken advantage of the Promise Own, so we appreciate that. The pictures I hand you, I live right across the street from this. This is what I look at every day when I pull out of my driveway, when I look out the front window of my house. It's Landmark Church. And since those pictures were taken, somebody did come and tear down the hanging soffit, so that's not hanging, but now there's a gaping hole under that I look at every day. Just curious what's going on with that. There's, I've heard lots of stories, and it seems like.
Well, this time, I believe we're still in discussions with the church.
Mr. Mayor, we have received some preliminary plans from Pastor Barry David. We've told him it's time to submit, so I'm hopeful that he, Jeff, has he submitted his formal submission at this point?
He's hiring an architect that Ed and I are aware of, and some of the council people are aware of, that is a real legitimate architect. And, but we don't have anything at this, beyond the preliminary stuff at this time. We did a study session with them in sometime over the summer.
Right.
But, no, they have not submitted anything.
Is your concern over the safety of this building, or the, or concern of what's going to happen with the site being that you have it next to it?
It's all about safety. You can't see in the pictures of the brick on the front of the building. I believe it's a cinder block building with the brick overlay on it.
Vineyard.
Yeah, vineyard brick on it, and it's, it's starting to peel off. I know this winter, when, after, you know, the moisture gets behind it, freezes, it's going to get worse. It is, you know, it's just, it's been going on for a long time. It's, like I said, you see the pictures of what I look at every day, you know, the parking lot in the summertime looks more like a hayfield than a parking lot. You know, the weeds are six feet tall. It just, it's unkempt, there's lots of promises that have been, this is, you know, what's been going on for eight, nine years now that, and it's, it's not happened. You guys can keep the pictures. So I'll just, you know, I like to bring it back to the table. Thank you.
No, we're, we're monitoring the situation. I will make sure that code enforcement takes a ride by there, even though he is in the process of attempting to bring a proposal to us, he still needs to maintain what he has. Like I said, I, hopefully we'll get something concrete. I'm sure council will be prepared to take the appropriate action. He's certainly been given enough time to act and to do something. So he does have an architect, that the architect is real. We met, Mayor Webb and I actually talked with the architect last week, so he is legitimate. I have seen a letter of credit, they do have financing to do this project.
We've been, this whole thing started back a couple years ago, but we actually had him here with the, the beginning of this discussion, I believe, back in February, and then we had to kind of pressure him into moving. He wasn't moving on anything, so he could actually come up with some kind of viable plan of sustainability for the church. And June was our deadline, I believe we had.
That has been the story of our relationship.
It went by, and we've been kind of very, we've been kind of patient, and we're not trying to push him into a hardcore decision, but we're actually getting a little troubled by his lack of anticipation to move forward.
It's just, it's confusing. At one point, there was a group called Life Remodeled. They've, I know they've, they've remodeled a house here in Hazel Park. They also helped, they had church with supplies and manpower to build a ramp for somebody that was in, a wheelchair ramp for somebody. They're a big, they had offered to take the building, let him use it as a church, and they were going to rehab it and use that as their, their office, and he refused to do it, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what his plans are, I'm, I just.
Sometimes his plans seem to be a mystery to us, but I think that, like I said, he's got, you know, it's up to him to actually pull the trigger on this and submit plans. So we have done a study session on this, he needs to take, he needs to take the next step, submit real plans, submit it to the planning commission, go through the process, and we'll see what the planning commission and the city council and the residents think of his proposal. So that's what needs to happen. If he doesn't do it, again, I'm going to be back to city council with another recommendation to take the appropriate action. But I will tell you that he has shared with me that even his consultant says that that older building does have to come down, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on this. I know that we're past, he's past his deadline. I'd actually recently emailed.
Yes.
About this. And can you tell the community right now what our, what our recourse is at this point? Because that's what I've been pushing for, is to really continue forward with this. We've put on these restrictions, he keeps breaking them. What is our next protocol?
Initially, his attorney came here and promised that the building would be sold by a certain time.
Correct.
Obviously, the building has not been sold, obviously he's not met his deadlines, but he has actually been working with us. It's not like we haven't seen him. There have been instances in the past where we hadn't seen him for a while. We do see and hear from him regularly, we hear from his investors regularly. Mayor Webb and I met with his architect last week, and he says that they're actually going to submit something, and the architect wanted to be sure that we would consider it. It's a different plan, find it intriguing, I don't really know how I feel about it.
I'm not quite.
And I'm just going to be honest with you all about that. It's very different, and I have to wrap my brain around it, and I think the community's going to have to wrap their collective brains around it.
It's out of the norm.
It is.
I'm not really thrilled about it, but I'm going to wait and see what the final outcome is.
We're, and that's kind of where I am. It's, everyone needs to see it and comment, and the community needs to make a decision.
Yeah.
We've already gotten some preliminary plans, so that's probably pretty much what we've gotten to with a few tweaks. We're waiting for him to actually submit. So his first one was a hard no. The second one.
I think that's enough. Let's see what he comes up with.
Let's see what he comes up with.
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
I'm just, I feel like this gentleman said, the frustration behind this, the entire community is affected by it.
It is time for him to move.
And, yeah, at some point, we, we really have to put that foot down and say this is not tolerable in our city.
I have a phrase.
It's unacceptable. It's not safe.
I have a phrase, it's not polite enough for cable TV, but it is time for him to do something or do something else.
Let's move on. Darlene Shaunessky, 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 sorry. Darlene Shaunessky. I'll get it out.
Hi, I'm Darlene Shaunessky. I reside at one one two two East Granite Avenue. The only questions I had really were about the city books. Do we have a yearly audit? Who does the yearly audit, and how many years have they been doing it? And if I can see a copy of it.
I believe last year was UHY.
UHY.
That did the audit, and it's usually done somewhere around February-ish.
That's nice.
That's when we get the report, it's done before that.
Okay.
It's also on file, I think, on our website, and also with the Department of Treasury.
Okay, cool.
But if you want, you can get a copy at the city clerk's office.
Copy's available.
Okay, great. And do you guys change auditors every year?
Not every year.
Not every couple, probably four years or five.
Usually every four or five years we put it out for bid. Before that, it was Alan Young and Associates.
Yeah.
Before that, it was Plan.
There's pretty much all, it's a group of like four or five different auditing companies that are generally in this area that wind up doing most of the audits in this part of the region.
Great, okay, thank you.
We can get other ones to apply, that'd be nice, but a lot of them are already busy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jake Slevatz, welcome, sir.
How's it going, everyone?
Good.
So Jake Slevatz, sixteen twenty East Hayes, and I just have a couple questions here about the, the draft here for the, for the marijuana ordinance. The first one I have is, I see some, some zoning-related requirements in here, like the anapies, decorative lighting, different standards that were set out in seventeen twenty-one before. Is that going to be repealed as, as part of this? Do we know?
More than likely, most of it might be repealed, basically, because I, the last thing we need is conflicting ordinances, and the idea is to make this more simple and not have six different.
Basically, complete rewrite.
Yeah.
Okay.
The next thing I had, of course, is going to be about the, the number of licenses. I was, I was wondering if the recreational and the medical licenses are being considered separately, or if they're, they're going to be stacked, so it's.
Most likely, and then maybe one other one on the side. Plus, if you look at the state ordinance, it puts you into the part where you have boutiques, and you have compassion clubs, you have all different types of venues and types of uses, which we're trying to get a grasp on.
Okay.
Because it's open, it's the wild, wild west, and we, I think, got a pretty good grasp on some of this, where other cities have held back and not got their feet wet, and they just opened up one or two, and that's it.
Right.
Well, unfortunately, the marketplace is set as different standard. I'm not happy, I'm not pro marijuana, I'm not against it, but I'm, I'm more medical. I, I think the medical purposes are valid, but as far as recreational, I'm not always for that.
Okay, understandable.
Saying that there's, there's some probables and improbables that may go with this ordinance and may not.
Right.
We're, we're going to have some discussion on it here shortly.
Yeah, I know a lot of the things are going to have to be hammered out, which is one of the reasons that I wanted to speak on it. All in all, things look pretty good here. On that number of licenses, though, you know, I know I've talked with some of the council about, you know, perhaps imposing a citywide total for the total number of facilities that can be within the city. I was wondering, you know, if the council would be willing to at least consider that while going through this process of drafting the new ordinance.
We don't know where we're going with it all together yet.
Okay.
Let's see, we're really want to see what, what is going to, we're looking at separating different parts of the city. We're trying to spread it out where there's not a bunch clumped together.
Right.
Jake.
And that's kind of. And that's kind of where we're at.
Do you feel like a town hall would be beneficial if we had people from the industry describing all the different aspects of it? I, I've wondered about that, 'cause this, I think the unknown is one of the biggest things, that people don't know what's going on and just assume they're gonna have a giant marijuana city. Um, but I, I've wondered about a town hall.
I actually think that would be a good idea. I think it would be good to, um, kind of get some, uh, some more information on this, you know? Even as I've been looking into this, you know, obviously, uh, you combing through the sixteen pages here and, uh, taking a look at, uh, pretty much everything that we wanna implement, um, there's still so many questions, you know? That, uh, that I think everyone kind of, uh, would, uh, like to, um, basically get some answers to from the,
Have you read the state ordinance?
I have not read through the whole thing. It's a long one. And, and that's why I think that a town hall, actually, now that you bring that up, might be, uh, pretty beneficial, just to kind of get the, uh, the cliff notes of that information. I guess the only other thing I'll address right now, um, is I saw that we, uh, wanted to do another cutout here on South John R. from, uh, Myers Jarvis. Um, I was wondering, uh, why we don't, um, perhaps consider, uh, Myers to Robert instead? Just because it's all kind of the same congruent area there? You know, you're only cutting out about two blocks, and it just seems a little, um, seems a little off. You know, you're not getting that whole section there.
We already had discussion.
You're in our heads.
And that's what we're going to have, is some discussion here on the first reading, and we're gonna talk about it.
Okay.
And that's one of, that's one of the points we were talking about.
Okay.
This discussion tonight may shed a lot of light and answer a lot of the questions for everyone. But remember, we're blazing a trail here. Jeff Campbell and I were speakers to the Metropolitan Affairs Council, uh, downtown Detroit last week on this very issue, because we are blazing the trail. They were very, very intrigued and interested in what we were saying, and it was great to get some of their feedback on what we were doing, as well as present them with some of our perspective on this. But this is new territory for everyone. So hopefully, tonight, we'll shed some light on that. But I think what we've done is we've simplified this, and I think the fact that, I think everyone on council's plan is to stack these licenses, so that we kind of curtail the footprint of these businesses to their existing formats right now. So that's what everybody's looking at. Uh, I know that's been my recommendation from the very beginning. So I'll talk a little bit more when we begin the discussion on this license here. But there are reasons why we're involved and why we're an opt-in community, and I'll try to go into that as much as I can.
Okay, sounds good. Well, I do look forward to the, uh, the discussion here, and, uh, thank you for hearing me out on these things, and, uh,
No problem.
Thanks, Jake.
No problem. Thanks, Jake. All right, that does the slips. Is anyone from the audience wanna come up and speak briefly?
Hello? Apparently you missed my slip. Uh, Jesse Robertson, two three three five three Hoover Avenue. Good evening, mayor and council. I have come for you tonight to speak about a prior event. Four weeks ago, as part of the homecoming celebrations for the Hazel Park Vikings, the school district and many of us and other organizations came together to put on the hometown huddle. While rain did force the event to move inside, it was a resounding success. Hundreds of people, both residents of Hazel Park and from other communities, got a chance to meet with many people working in all manner of organizations in Hazel Park. I was there myself, representing the Hazel Park Historical Commission. I was seated, near people representing a number of other great organizations, including the Hazel Park Lions Club, the Knights of Columbus, Gift of Life of Michigan, Community Engagement, and many others. Again, our city has frequently borne the brunt of many attacks on its character. While many might think that the solution is to focus on doing things the technically correct way and just walking on the straight and narrow, the truth remains that the court of public opinion does not care about that. That is why we do this sort of thing. This is why I was very glad for the opportunity to take part in the hometown huddle and thankful for everyone that I saw come out to visit. Those that came got to see that in spite of a lot of negativity, and they may have seen or heard anywhere, that there is, in fact, a great deal of truth to the phrase, great things are happening in Hazel Park. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve Mulder, six two eight East Granite, Hazel Park, of course. Mayor Webb, city councils. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, thank you for doing everything that you do. I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Klobuchar. One of the questions is, according to what I'm been reading for how you wanna set up the medical marijuana, you have all the choices to rely to these guys. What gives you the right that you get to go through them?
That me, that I get to?
I apologize, sir, I talk with my hands.
Okay. So let me be clear with you.
Please.
I've already expressed to all five of these people that that is not the way that I feel comfortable with this. So if you hold on to your seat, you will see that this is probably gonna go a slightly different way. But by charter, it is the administration that's charged with doing the investigation on all of these things. But I do not want, and this is, you know,
Speaking of Mike.
Yeah, but I do not want to be the one to make recommendations. So sit tight, and I think all of your concerns will be addressed.
At least on that question. Yes, thank you. And the other one. Bless you. And I'm trying to say this the politest way I can. And I understand from several people in the city, you were the one that screwed Mrs. Holland out of her, uh, signatures and everything else, when it was a problem with, uh, the county. And then you said, no, she don't get them. If she was one of your cronies, would she get them?
Do you really wanna make this statement? Because I'll be happy to answer this for you.
I don't think this is the,
Okay, but I do think that I need to answer this since it has come up.
I don't think this is the proper, we've been advised.
But I will say this, that this was brought to our attention by the county, and the county clerk's office is the one that caught the error. And every error that they caught, those individuals were taken off of the ballot. This was not my decision to take them off the ballot. This was the county clerk that caught this. It's an untrue statement, sir.
Well, then I admit, apologize for the statement.
Thank you, sir.
You all have a good night, due to my health. Thank you, Steve. You're going.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to get up and speak? Seeing no one, we'll close public discussion. Anyways, we're moving to consent agenda. Item one says two, three, four, five, and six. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as presented, Mr. Mayor.
Support with discussion of item six.
Sure. Is there anyone here from business license two one seven three eight John R. Central Land Agency Title Company for their business license? If you do, please stand up. Is there anyone from, oh, we're doing, that's it. Sale of Hughes Avenue north of Maple Lane Avenue to General Building Authority, Mr. Klobuchar.
Yes, actually, we're transferring this as we are allowed to do under state law. We're transferring this section of Hughes Street to the General Building Authority, so that we can then transfer this section of Hughes Street to Ashley Capital, who will in turn transfer to us the parking lot of the ice arena that my predecessor quite inexplicably, simply paved over, uh, during the ice arena construction. So I want you all to understand, we've worked out a deal with Ashley Capital, so that we will actually own most of the ice arena parking lot in the future. This street is now meaningless to us, it is surrounded by Ashley Capital property. Uh, we don't need it for anything, we sure as heck don't want to maintain it. Uh, I'm glad Ashley Capital's gonna work this deal out with us, and, uh, they will get something that they want, and we will get something that we need.
Any discussion from the board?
Yes, sir, your honor. Um, prior, I, I, it was new information. Um, I understand the part about the street closure. In the original packet, it said that, um, we would have use of the lot. So now we are getting the lot.
We will, we will get the lot.
One of the conditions is that should we decide to sell the ice arena, Ashley Capital have the right of first refusal.
They will have first right of first refusal.
But we are not selling the ice arena.
We are, I have no intention to sell the ice arena.
I, I want that out there, 'cause that'll be the next thing.
Actually, in twenty-four, it'll be about a five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars.
Almost eighteen years I have nursed that thing, scraped up, found money to, I have eat, slept, and breathed it many years.
And all of our residents have had to live.
I want to keep it, and I wanna see it turn a property.
So the, the deed to the parking lot, it will be a deed with that restriction on it of right of first refusal?
But we will have, we will actually take, so you can be proud of yourselves that you are fixing something from a previous council nearly twenty years later.
All right. Any other questions on the consent agenda from the council? We have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion, any dissension? Consent agenda is passed. Now to the topic of the day. Ministry of Reports. I'm not gonna read all this, we all know it's about the marijuana, resident, medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana ordinance, which has come up multiple times before we got to this point. Let's, uh, have a discussion. I need a motion to adopt at this point.
I would move approval of the ordinance to amend chapter five point zero four, commercial marijuana facilities of the city of Hazel Park.
Do you have a support?
Support.
Discussion.
Do I have any discussion to start on this?
Yes.
Who wants to start?
I have a lot, but I'd love to start.
Go right ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem, Amy Aubrey, has added the whole, uh, the whole ordinance, so.
Do we, uh, how many questions do we have?
Mayor and, uh, city manager, I was wondering if we might have Jen Zalinski, who's,
Can we have Jen Zalinski come up here? And maybe we should get her a chair, uh, as well, because that way she's,
And Jen Zalinski is who for the audience?
She is our consultant from Danaskis. She's one of the top experts in the state on marijuana-related issues. And we're just gonna bring her up to the table here. Uh, we're grateful that she's here. She had, uh, she's skipping something, I think, for her daughter tonight, so that she can join us here at this.
Seat over there.
Yeah, we have a seat for you. We're not gonna,
We have a microphone for you, too.
Hi, Jeff, how are you doing?
We're, we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna make you stand up for all this, 'cause it's just too much stuff. I think that backpack's bigger than you are, so.
Tell us what page you would like to start on, Mayor Pro Tem.
Hi, Jen.
Good evening.
Again, Jen, Jen has worked very hard with Melissa Schwartz. Obviously, Melissa Schwartz is, uh, dealing with a, a family emergency this week, and she is in our thoughts and our prayers, and we hope that where she has gone, uh, brings some hope to her and her family. So, uh, Jen's worked very hard on this, and, uh, hopefully, she can shed some light on some of these things. She's been briefed by the changes that Jeff and Amanda made earlier to this new ordinance and your revised, uh, packet, which, uh, addresses some of my concerns over this that, uh, I didn't want in the ordinance. Uh, I got to do some of mine first, so now you guys get to do yours.
Okay, so I'm on page five, letter F. So this statement for the audience says, applicants currently authorized for a city operating license under MMFLA shall be given first opportunity and priority for a city operating license under MRTMA. So this is, um, our attempt at controlling the footprint of the adult-use facilities, um, by trying to keep them located, uh, with the stacking with the medical marijuana facilities, um, so that, so that everybody in the city understands we are trying to control this footprint and not have lots and lots and lots of marijuana all over. My question is, is this, um, it says first opportunity and priority, so my question to us is, this doesn't guarantee, um, that a medical marijuana applicant, or, uh, somebody in three, four, or five years? Um, so medical marijuana applicants are not guaranteed, um, and that we could still have the adult-use licenses happening outside of that footprint? So this doesn't lock it in, but it does give us that option? And, okay.
And I, I don't know that you can necessarily, I don't know that you can necessarily lock it in.
Okay.
Um, you have requirements for the operators that you have already selected in the city to meet the expectations of becoming operational within a given timeframe. If they don't meet that requirement, now you have an available license, um, and/or a location in, you know, depending on how you wanna look at it. So this gives the opportunity, should a, a license become available, first of all, there is not another operator that is medically licensed here in the city. So when they do apply, you're first calling out that they need to be duly licensed in the adult use as well as the medical market. So this provision within the ordinance, relatively speaking, could probably go away after you award your, uh, adult-use licenses. Because once you have already awarded those to the existing operators that you've awarded a medical license to, thereafter, it's, it's really not going to apply. Elsewhere in the ordinance, it does indicate that dual licensure in medical and adult-use market is required.
Okay, um,
This is also like the state, how they were doing it as well.
Yeah, this is how the state's,
Considering the medical marijuana applicants first.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody here, who I know this has been a point that has been brought up, understands that. Um, I also just wanted, uh, this is kind of a, a quick status update, kind of on, uh, point number G, because we're requiring people to be operational no, no less than six months. Obviously, our applicants from a year ago are not operational. A lot of this was due to the state. Uh, just a real quick status update on how this impacts our current applicants.
Honestly, that's going to be up to you and city administration in how you want to roll that out. Um, it's, it's a little difficult to impose a regulation on a licensee or an awarded applicant, um, something that wasn't necessarily required of them to begin with. So it would have to result in direct conversations with those licensees that are established here in the city under the medical ordinance, to work with them in facilitating a timeline in which they're required to become operational under.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, a couple of issues with the opening of these, uh, facilities. First, as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem referenced, problems with the state and problems with the whole licensing process from the state that was, that was, uh, delayed, uh, because, uh, the state, uh, during the previous administration, had difficulties, uh, putting together a licensing process for this whole industry. Uh, then, the, uh, the next thing then was the advent of recreational marijuana and the referendum that passed. And remember, that changed what we got from the medical marijuana facilities. It basically, uh, turned what was something that would generate revenue to the city into something that simply did not. So now revenue is generated based upon the number of dispensaries or provisioning centers, if you wanna call them that, that a community has. So, uh, all of that changed. And then the third hurdle is simply lack of availability of product in the state of Michigan, uh, which we've learned a great deal about in the past few weeks.
And if I may piggyback on that, um, in order to have any sort of revenue sharing from the excise tax generated under the adult-use market, it is only for established and operational, um, retail facilities. So.
So the grows no longer generate additional revenue for us. We hope that the legislature will take action to correct that, uh, problem. Uh, don't hold your breath on that. Uh, but, uh, in order for us to generate revenue, and there were two reasons, frankly, and want everybody at home to know and to understand, there are two reasons, I think, why the city of Hazel Park is opting in. And those reasons are, number one, uh, our residents have shown by a vote of the people several times that there is overwhelming support for legalization of this product. And secondarily, Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. So we need to be able to generate revenue, because we will have, uh, different expenses. So we need to be able to generate revenue because we will have different expenses through pensions and post-retirement benefits that will crush us if we do not come up with another revenue source. So these are the two factors that drive our participation in this. But it's, well, I support legalized marijuana, like the vast majority of Hazel Park. I'm supportive of this because the city needs the revenue.
So can I propose a, just a single word change? The last sentence of letter G says, "Licensees who are not fully operational within the allotted time will result in a city operating license being revoked." What if we change that to "may result in the city operating license being revoked"?
Very good idea.
I have a discussion about that, though. First of all, this doesn't really take effect until after we make it effective. So it really doesn't apply to those who have really applied until after this is effective.
You, you are correct, but I think Mayor Pro Tem's point is well-taken because what we've seen now were three unforeseen hurdles that were thrown at our process. When we began going through the medical process, we had no idea that any of these things were going to happen. So I think.
The word "may," though, I add the subjective instead of being objective.
I think that may be prudent to do "may" because "may," that way they know there is a deadline, and they may be subjected to that deadline. But if there is some valid reason for them not to be subjected to that deadline, then they can approach the governing body, make their case, and council is always sovereign.
They got the six months and then the six months. They got two six-months periods. I'm just saying, looking at lawsuits, looking at language of contracts.
Throughout the ordinance, "may" is used in a lot of license, "may be revoked, may be revoked, may be revoked," throughout the ordinance.
No, they know, they're subject to.
They know, they are subject to revocation even if we say "may." So they, they're not guaranteed an appeal. They're not guaranteed an affirmative decision on their appeal. But it does, it leaves us, protects us, and gives us the ability to make those decisions as opposed to somebody else coming in and saying, "I want their license now" because they didn't open in six months. So I think that actually gives us more latitude to make a good decision about this process.
I want to go back and ask a rebuttal question to item F. Would we need a motion for?
Mayor Pro Tem's, we need a motion for that?
I was just going to ask.
We're going to get down to this, but I got a couple of questions. Let's just get the questions out of the way.
If there's no objection to that, why don't we just keep them all and do all the?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah. So unless there's a serious objection to that, let's just keep them all and draw them at once with one big motion.
Does the city clerk keep them tabs?
Yes.
All right. Item F, where it had the MMFLA, and it has to be under license of MRTMA, and those would be to the other medical marijuana dispensaries that's already been approved. What about the people that have submitted and got grows in our community, in the city? Are they going to be eligible also to be able to apply for the recreational license under the same thing? Because I feel that, you know, you're kind of shunning one group or another that may be able to be applicable to this process because they've already been approved.
Okay, so.
I'm just saying that they may be eligible to apply.
If we further clarify, applicants currently authorized by this, well, it says by the city, authorized by the city of Hazel Park for a city operating license under the MMFLA shall be given first opportunity under the MRTMA. So you're looking for some subsequent language that would identify if.
Clarification.
If the applicant under the MMFLA did not get approved for licensing.
But they got approved for a grow in our community, which we did have for five.
Yeah.
In other words, Mr. Mayor, you may want to leave the door open for additional licenses for some of the folks who initially applied for grow and are currently operating those types of licenses.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. It's up to your colleagues on the governing body.
Does that make sense? To give opportunities to others. I mean, we can't just shut the door in everybody's face either.
But again, my recommendation is that we, we look first for the existing licenses, and then we're going to do another one.
We got some people.
Then we, then we look then to the next tier of licensees, which would be the grows processes or folks like that that already have some type of medical license because they've already been vetted and looking to really not have such a long onerous process for this approval process. Does that make sense?
I think we need to put something in there to that effect, where we go to the next wave of people. Would that be, would it be legally correct or not?
It would, it all depends on the amount that you want to let in.
Yeah, I think the current, the current thing, what the current F reads, though, is if you have an operation under MMFLA, you can still apply, or you still, you still have priority, whether, it doesn't differentiate.
It doesn't differentiate between provisioning center or license, so.
That's kind of where I was going. I want to know where this.
Anybody with a medical can apply.
I just wanted to make sure this is all where it was going here.
And it doesn't necessarily, in, in the language here under F, it just is identifying the applicants. An applicant still has the opportunity to apply under the MRTMA, but the requirement of the city is, okay, if there is an available license for said facility type, you're now then required to maintain dual licensure in the city. So I, I don't, I don't think that it's necessarily eliminating somebody to apply under the adult-use laws.
I just don't want us to get accused and sued because we didn't make an opportunity for another applicant.
Okay.
Because we can't just say it's a closed-door type thing.
First opportunity.
I would agree with that. I know, I see it's a priority, but we, we cannot put ourselves in that position as a city. Okay, anybody okay with that? Everybody?
You want to change?
Well, I just wanted, it's already saying.
Not the clarification.
Clarification's there. I want the city attorney to put the clarification in this, the revised to the.
So some wording, you wanted to add some wording?
I'd like to see some wording changed to the effect. With the implication that we are going to give an opportunity for others to apply that have current licenses, grow, or otherwise. Because it, I don't want to put ourselves in a situation which we did before. And you know what I'm talking about. Amendment number two. You know what I'm talking. Because we had that happen before.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
H, I'm sure we all, I'm sure we all want to talk about H. For those in the audience, H is regarding the number of licenses available for each type. This ordinance says there shall be no more than six physical locations for each facility type. I believe the previous ordinance, that number was four.
Right.
And then we could approve additional by resolution. I would like to keep that number four with additional licenses being approved by resolution. I'm open to, again, the fact that we can approve additional by resolution as we have, I'm more comfortable doing that and trying to keep our minimum number of licenses low until we actually have some facilities open and see the, the actual impact that this has on the community. So I, my proposal is to keep it at four.
That's kind of what we're talking about. We don't know whether we can or not.
If, if I'm.
We're already at the six level.
Can we cap them? Can we cap them at some point?
You, this is important for you all to remember. Any cap that you impose is somewhat illusionary, okay? You are the city council. You are by law empowered to set this. And new city council can come in next year and can change this. Any cap that you set is just simply, doesn't really, I got to be honest with you, just doesn't really mean anything. That's number one, because you are sovereign. You can't go back and slam the door after you've opened it because they have property rights, but you can, you, you can always add. The other thing, though.
We opened the Pandora's Box a few months ago.
Right. That, that I'll put out to you, though, is that without the rec license, the, the medical license is going to be somewhat useless. No one is going to open, I think, a medical marijuana facility in the city of Hazel Park without a rec license. When medical was the only game in town, people were going, they were renewing their cards, they were doing that because.
It's supposed to be all medical. Everybody's got their card, right?
Right, but, right, but not anymore, okay? The voters of the state of Michigan have spoken, and they, and of course overwhelmingly in the city of Hazel Park, maybe higher than any other community around, voted to legalize. So it is no longer a crime to own marijuana or to use marijuana, and you may do so legally. So that changed, that rec referendum changed everything with our ordinance. So the, we're going to limit the number of licenses, it doesn't mean anything.
It's, I understand, I guess you could consider it symbolic, but based on the feedback that we've been getting from residents, I think that's an important statement to make, that we understand, we've heard you, and that we're going to do our best to try to keep this number more manageable until we understand, there's been a lot of unintended consequences, a lot of surprises as we've gone through this process. And until we, we actually start having doors open and see the impact that this has on parking, traffic, and every, all the other concerns that have been raised, I personally am more comfortable keeping it low, approving additional by resolution as we have. And then, like I said, we, we can approve by resolution if we've all, you know, reviewed everything and we vote by a majority vote of this council. This is just my personal opinion that until we really see the impact, I'm more comfortable keeping it at the number that we agreed on last year.
Your Honor, through the chair, I, I would agree with that. I like setting the number at four, and then by merit and, and what comes forward, possibly increasing it. Because as it's written right now, we could potentially have forty-two physical locations, if my math, and my math isn't great.
And we've.
But that's not really how it works.
If they're not stacked.
We've, we purposely made sure that people had every opportunity to be able to acquire a license. And then, you know as well as the rest of this board knows, we did make sure that they were stackable.
Yep.
And we did mark, it's up to this council to make that decision how they're placed.
I think.
And how it's going to demographically affect our neighborhoods.
I think it's.
That's how we've tried to make sure we had very, a very low footprint here.
I think it's six of one and half dozen of another, but I think that you need to understand that without the, without the rec licensure, they're not going to open. So there's no, there's no money in a medical marijuana.
There's no money for us either.
There's no money for you guys in a medical marijuana either. So if they're all, if all six are ready to go, okay, you know, I think we want to open six.
Again, through the chair, I, I think I'm being misunderstood. The ones that we have already approved, we have to support them. They, they've already jumped through hoops for these licenses, and they've earned the right to do business in Hazel Park.
I agree with that statement.
But I, I think.
We're not talking about, I'm not talking about in addition to. I'm talking about just the ones that we've already got.
Thirty-six.
I think what the mayor was talking about was the ones that already have licenses now, and then maybe keeping the door open for another one. And there are reasons to do that across the board for legal purposes.
All on the same page.
I think, I think we're all on the same page, that this is, this is the best way to go with this. And if, and if they fail to open, then.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That is on them. They don't open, they're done.
Yeah, I, I just don't, for, so I, I want to make sure that, so, because I think this is going to require some serious clarification on the legal department's end. But, you know, if we're going to ask, so basically, we're not saying, we want to make sure that we have six licenses available for the people that already have the medical.
That's how many we have currently, yes.
Right.
And then whatever else in addition to is sort of up to council based on resolution, so on and so forth, as we did before.
Yes, because there's, there's more than retail licenses in this.
No, I, I know, I know, I know. I agree a hundred percent. I'm just trying to sort of delineate exactly, so we're going to have to be more clear and.
You're going to have to separate it.
I think you got it, though. I think you.
No.
Separate that paragraph and.
Yeah, yeah, conceptually, I'm there. I just want to make sure that, yeah, there might be a "have to be," as Jen and I were talking, sort of almost, we'll figure it out.
And it sounds, you know, we looked at three, we looked at four, and we saw the other facilities, I did, looking around, did a lot of reading on this, and saw a lot of traffic, parking lots backed up in other areas that had these when everything was starting to boil out. And I kind of flippantly said, well, we just have six to eliminate the parking problem, where we don't have as many cars stacked up in an area, and we have it spread out throughout the city, and we still get the revenue. It's not our money. They're going to pay us anyways, okay? And we don't have to blow out, they don't go around and buy up houses around them or another building and tear it down just to make a parking lot. We'd rather have the buildings than an extra parking lot added on to an existing business that they bought or empty building.
Mostly.
So we really want to keep it kind of, you know, smaller buildings and smaller parking lots. We don't want to see a big footprint of a mega store or nothing like that. We want to see a nice, nice individual-type business that can, that can sustain. Because really, when this is all said and done, there's going to be some fallout, like every other new, new, you know, business that hits the stock market, they come out with a big boom, and then all of a sudden, after about three months, there's, the stock ain't worth nothing.
Not everyone is.
Not everybody's going to make it.
Right.
You know, remember, remember the video, videos stores? I mean, remember the dollar store boom? That's the way it was. It all popped out there, and all of a sudden, a year later, it all washed out, and there's only so many survivors. That's the way the business world is, and we know that it's going to wind up coming out to that point. And we hope that somewhere down the line, everybody makes it, but not everybody will.
If I may elaborate on, on the comments and the discussion here, the, the way it's written currently is that it advises that there shall be no more than six physical locations for each facility type. I think some clarity on what a facility type is might help further elaborate that a processor, medical, or recreational is still only in that six category. Just because you're a, a different type of license under the state law doesn't mean that there's an additional location. So I think if we use some definitions that are already contained within this ordinance to identify and clarify that it is of the equivalent license, only six locations of each facility type shall be available. Now, now we're scaling that back.
Right.
That'll help with the public, too, because when people see that and they're doing forty-two.
We don't want to confuse the people that actually.
How about a little bit of clarity then on that forty-two? It's real simple. We know many of the applicants are putting all three of them together. There's one at Six, Seventy-five, and Eight Mile. It's three licenses on the campus, and that's what Hyatt Labs would be doing. There's, they're going to grow and process in one location. So to throw out forty-two is kind of irresponsible.
No, it's not going to be. It's not going to be forty-two locations. It could be forty-two licenses. But it's not, it's not going to be forty-two separate locations.
We know the difference. Throwing out forty-two is fear-mongering.
It's, yeah, that's not going to happen. But, but there may be forty-two licenses stacked at different, at consolidated locations.
You've got some that stack six.
I think we're all saying the same thing. We want it all confined into certain areas in certain places. We want it all stacked as much as we can because we know, based on our study of experience with economics, that there are boom and bust cycles to all of these things, and not all of these things are going to last.
All right, let's get back to the actual ordinance language. Let's work on the language.
Oh, so, go ahead, Amanda.
Maybe we should do a provision where we give priority to stacked licenses at some point also.
But that, that then, that address.
Under the official criteria.
That address the more, the more licenses that, and this way, this is, this solves the problem.
Well, you guys work on language. Can you give us a couple of options? And then we'll, we'll keep moving on while, while that language gets.
Moving on to, who's revoking? If they're not operational and we exercise the "may" clause in G, who's revoking?
I will, I think I should revoke, and they should be able to appeal to the city council.
Okay, so city manager, appeal, okay.
Yep, that would be consistent with other.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because it's not clear, but we're going to clarify it.
Yes, please. Because every process needs to be spoke, spread out here.
So moving on.
Yes, please.
Page six, letter I, raised microbusinesses shall be limited to three city operating licenses with city boundaries. Again, taking a conservative approach as pro-marijuana as I am until we really know how this is going to impact our community with our very limited commercial retail businesses, especially after we heard today that we've got thirteen people interested in opening a business in the city working with the Build Institute. I would like to reduce microbusinesses to one, and then additional being approved by resolution.
That's fine with me. Anyone else?
I, I wouldn't, I would disagree. I'd leave it at three.
My caution regarding one. My caution regarding one is that, that does open up a lot more risk for litigation. If you're not providing a competitive market-
With two?
I mean, that's, that's up for you guys, I'm just giving you feedback based on, on what I've seen in other municipalities.
To minimize-
We're pretty open here, I mean, we already-
You've already, like, Mike, you've, some may fail, some may succeed.
One looks like a carve-out.
Yes.
Yeah, it does, one's a problem.
Yep.
Two, council?
At least reduce this number.
Two, two is fine, but remember, like I said, all of these, and I want everybody at home and TV land and the audience to know, all of these limits can at any time be changed by council by resolution.
By resolution, that's why I wanna make-
We don't have to handle it.
Yeah, they also don't all have to be approved.
No, they, thank you.
While we have three available, we don't have to approve three, ever.
You don't have to approve any if you don't like any of the plans that you got.
Yeah. I feel, I feel-
Any other consideration relevant to the public's health, the health, safety or whatever.
I actually trust you guys to make good decisions, and I don't think that you need to limit yourselves, okay? There are reasons to do things that we do, we try to minimize liability. But also, you guys get to make the decision, as long as you're using objective criteria and you're not engaged in disparate treatment and you can articulate that objective criteria, you guys can make the decisions as to what you want in this community.
And if I may further piggyback on that, relative to the number of locations, if I can pull on the examples that the city manager was using relative to video stores, cell phone stores, all of these kinda flash in the pan type of industries, you're going to see that with this market too. The free market will eventually work it out. It doesn't matter how many locations you pick, the free market will eventually prevail, and those that have good business sense and the ability to survive in the market will be the ones that are stable and remain. So really arbitrarily capping at a number doesn't, doesn't play into the economics and the rollout of the industry. It will prevail based on free market.
Yeah, absolutely, and not everybody is gonna make it. And there will initially be, and that's why you're smart to limit the footprints. And when you're not limiting the footprints, you'll see further in the ordinance, what are we looking at? What are we always looked at? What other use do you have for that building if it's no longer marijuana? That's one of the points that we use when we award licenses. The stacking is important because you're reducing the-
I don't believe we can stack micro businesses with other licenses.
No, you cannot.
This is why I'm, my concern is, we're trying to develop, create walkable downtowns, new districts, and we have our carve-outs, but we also still have very limited real estate, being a very small town. And by adding more licenses, my, my concern is, you know, we're trying to grow and I don't want everything occupied.
How about this, this may even be, this may be more restrictive and also more flexible. How about you simply say, council by resolution may consider a micro business. That way, there is no guarantee that anybody will get a micro business.
Is that, from a legal standpoint, does that spell out the-
Amanda?
I'm looking at the gears left turning.
Or do you wanna get back with this?
Yeah, do you wanna think about that one?
Then you can run into the, are you doing a carve-out if it's just one?
Right.
Do, I mean, it's one thing if you have a bid period where people are coming and there's multiple, but are you doing it because?
But again, we don't have to give them out.
No, you don't.
You don't have to give them out.
You don't have to give them out even-
We don't have to give them out at all.
Yeah.
You don't have to give them out now.
We don't have to give them out at all, they're on the ordinance, it doesn't mean we have, they're not, doesn't mean we have to give them out.
And it certainly doesn't have to be the priority going, I mean, that's, starting with the other things first, really, to be honest.
You could simply say, we may, may by resolution.
But it does support small business too.
This is why I was saying two by resolution, so that we are letting our residents know, we, we have heard you, we are concerned. But should this work out, prove very beneficial, we are open to approving more.
And I'm, I'm fine with two, I just, I'm fine with May, or I'm fine with two, it's just one is bad.
Yeah, okay. And, and the language further on in the ordinance in this section gives council the authority to increase or decrease the number of any facility type by resolution. So just listing, you know, that it, two licenses for micro business, you have the ability and control to increase.
We could change any ordinance we want.
Right.
Any council could.
Yep.
And it's even easier with this, 'cause it's just by resolution.
Right, yep.
Any luck here?
Jen, how does the, on the micro businesses, how does that tax revenue come to the communities? You know, any of the tax revenue, revenue, how is that generated from the micro business, just retail?
As it is for the retail component of the licensed market, a micro business is a licensed retailer, and all of the sales conducted at the retail level are, there is the excise tax of ten percent collected at that time. So the, the micro business generates revenue for the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, so what we're gonna do with, we're gonna change-
That, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, gonna change that to two? Council, we're gonna change that to two? One, down from three to two, okay.
It's going twice, going three times, okay. We're gonna do our second reading, so we'll probably change that too.
Try to have something that's acceptable.
Any more questions?
Oh, I got lots.
Should not eat up all the time.
I'm working through quickly, this one, council member Holland, I believe, maybe she may wanna speak to letter K, I'm just trying to go consecutively. We had written in an additional carve-out, Jake also brought this up. We have our carve-out on North John R. So I had asked last month that we consider putting some carve-outs on South John R. We got a nice map that showed us where we did and did not have licenses. So I believe there was a proposal to add Myers to Jarvis in addition to Tucker to Garfield, but I, I think we'd kinda discussed ahead, expanding that more.
Yeah, I, I think what we discussed was going from Elza to Madge. And then-
Maxlo to Madge.
Well, does it-
'Cause you got that mall there, I don't wanna see anything in that mall.
Maxlo needs to be in that zone.
Yeah, well, Elz, well, it will be if it's Elza, it will be Elza, Maxlo, Maxlo to Madge.
Yeah, Elza is below, sorry.
Right.
I always get it confused.
I always know where all my streets are, Mr. Mayor.
It's been a while.
Right, it's still, and that definitely encompasses Maxlo. So it's Elza to Madge, and then-
Meyer to Jarvis, or did you change that?
And why don't we like to leave that out, I would like to leave something in-
Granite to Woodruff.
Uh, bring, go with perhaps Granite to, what did you say, sir?
Granite to Woodruff.
Granite to Woodruff. Okay, so the carve-out zones shall be for no newer additional marijuana businesses from Elza to Madge on John R, and from Granite to Woodruff on John R.
And Tucker to Garfield stays. No, no, Tucker, Tucker to Garfield stays.
We're keeping Tucker to Garfield, absolutely. Yeah, that's a different section, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, absolutely.
Keeping that.
Okay.
Alright, so that was just a quick one.
Okay.
On M, I have a question. M reads, application shall be accepted for consideration defined by a specific time period. The specific time period for the city to accept application shall be recommended by the city manager to city council. The specific time period shall be codified by a resolution of city council. Do we do this annually? It, because applicants are required to renew or apply on a fairly annual basis, is this something we would have to do annually?
They need to apply, if you're going to open it for new applicants, that may be something that you choose to do whenever you choose to do it.
So I just, as needed, we would pass that resolution?
As needed, you will open for new, and the re-application process for existing applicants will be yearly.
Okay.
You got that all written down there?
And if there becomes an opening, then there can be brought-
If there becomes an opening, which you may or may not choose to fill.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, based on the language that's here, is it confusing?
No, I, I, it wasn't necessarily confusing, I just wanted to confirm.
Okay. Because of the confirmation, should we add further clarity into that statement?
Why don't we add the further clarity into that statement that she referenced? I think in council, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. But I think we wanna say that existing applicants will need to reapply on a yearly basis. From time to time, council may by resolution choose to open the process to new applicants. Does that, I just think you can even take me making the recommendation out of there. I think you just put that in there, it stands alone. If I need to make a recommendation and say, hey, we've got, right, I can at any time anyway.
Okay. I noticed, I, I misplaced my packet from last month, so someone's gonna have to refresh my memory.
You had more?
Where, where are we? I'm thorough, thorough.
She's a researcher by trade.
She is a, for the record, for the record, Mayor Pro Tem, Aubrey is a public policy analyst by trade. This is what she does for a living.
Um, there, there's an option under the adult use for special event licenses, was that in our version last month?
The definition was.
Yes.
Just the definition.
Yes.
Nothing in here permitting that.
So I guess my question to my colleagues, just because it's not in here, is that something we do or don't want in it? I, I guess we just never had discussion, so.
I'd rather not have it at this point.
So-
I'd rather leave that out of it at this point, and if we choose to add it later, we-
Under, under, where we have J, excessive marijuana grower is prohibited, we can add in additional items that indicate-
The other items that-
That the other items are also prohibited at this time.
Just 'cause it, yeah, it was missing, it wasn't addressed. So on that point, to chief, I do know that there have been some illegal events happening in the city that would fall under that license, so we might need to come up with a plan if this is gonna be prohibited, to find a way to monitor. I was informed about this specific event by a Madison Heights resident, talking to their city council, saying, I don't wanna be like Hazel Park because of these types of events. So this is something that is happening in our city, it's happening at our local bars. So I'm not sure how you wanna strategize, but we're gonna have to find a way to monitor this to make sure that we can enforce this ordinance on that point.
And I would disagree.
One, one thing to consider here.
I would like to see these licenses included and being allowed.
And, and-
The events, the temporary events.
I will tell you why I actually agree with that. I think that they should be temporary in nature. I think that there may be a special event that may come, like from time to time, we have had. Tommy Chong has visited Hazel Park, and usually when he does, we draw a crowd of several thousand people. That may be an event that you might want to issue with great restriction and control and policing of the area. Something you may wanna-
I'm okay with the events, I'm just saying that you gotta have, I mean, if you don't have a license for it-
Can't have one.
Let me, this is how, this is, it's like the vaping, okay? The vaping is really by the bootlegging, the bad vapes, those are the ones that are bad. Let's outlaw all vaping? There's only gonna be bootlegs available, right? So again, if we outlaw, if your complaint is, gee, these illegal parties are going on, we don't want the illegal parties, let, make them all illegal.
And do you wanna make a motion to add it into the ordinance?
If, if, if I may-
Yes, I-
Get a, get a roll call from everyone here.
Okay.
Where is the wording from previous?
I'm, I'm sorry, if I may interject, I don't mean to interrupt. However, in, in a previous discussion at a previous council meeting, these two types of licenses were discussed publicly, and for lack of a better word, we put a pin in it to establish this ordinance, get this up and running, and then to come back at a later date, once the state has issued the application and further information regarding the designated consumption establishments and temporary event licensing, so that the city would then have an opportunity to look at it, to incorporate it into the ordinance.
And that's why we have a Jen.
So do we not want to add it to J then?
I, you can, you can prohibit it based on this ordinance, but you can, I would recommend putting a sunset date to it or establishing a resolution that says January twenty twenty, we'll take this up for discussion to look at incorporating it. But I don't think that you want to prohibit it ongoing, just based on conversations that we've been having.
I kind of agree with you, Jen, I think maybe we need to give ourselves a year to see where everything else falls out and then revisit the issue.
Yeah, leave the definition in the ordinance, but you're not taking any action on it.
Right.
That way, at least that way-
I know we got a lot going on.
There's a, there's a, and I agree with you, Councilman.
You've mentioned it though, Ed, there may be a reason.
And, and nothing then-
In the next six months, eight months.
Nothing prohibits anybody who wants to do that from coming before you and saying, hey, can I apply for something? We wanna have a special use for it. Right now, we don't know what the state's saying on that, absent the state prohibiting something like this, I think we would just say, go ahead and grant it. But nothing, just like a special liquor license, they still come to you. So nothing prevents this.
So let's leave it as is.
Right, can I, yes, that's your best option.
Prohibit anything.
Leave it as is, you have it defined, if anybody wants to do a special use permit, make them come before council and say, hey, this is what we want, this is my plan, this is how I'm gonna police it, this is how I'm gonna restrict it. This is how I'm gonna ensure minors are not gonna be-
Insurancees and everything else.
Right, this is how I can ensure we're not gonna stink up the neighborhood.
And hopefully the state has their, in order by then too.
Hopefully the state has something, right.
I like the idea of keeping the definition.
Yes.
Prohibition is, never works, never works. And, you know, if Tommy Chong came to us tomorrow and said he was gonna host an event, are we gonna tell him no?
We're gonna let him host the event.
No, the other thing is, this, by just having the definition there, it doesn't legalize it either. So that, just so everyone's clear, it just defines it.
Like, like I said, I left my notes at home and I couldn't remember why this wasn't in here, but I do know this is something that is currently happening without us, do we get any tax revenue from issuance of those permits?
No, but I would like to provide some clarification for council as well as residents listening at home. To host an event or to have a consumption lounge without a license is illegal, and it is illegal federally. This is not a state law, this is a federal law. You cannot have a designated consumption establishment or host an event where there are onsite sales and consumption without a license issued by the state of Michigan and the city of Hazel Park. It is not something that can be done in your backyard and you invite a hundred residents. This is, this is still a regulated license that needs to be applied for and vetted by the state and the city.
Yeah, it's just like you can't run a blind pig out of your house.
Right.
I mean, can you have a party with friends that you know, yeah, but can you for profit or for anything like that, you cannot.
So we're gonna leave J as is, right, that's, that's the recommend, J as is. And then, so we're not putting anything in here on events yet, until we have further guidance from the state when they-
Just, just defining it doesn't open you up to any obligation to have it. It's, it's part of the state law, you're just identifying it as something that's, that's available. And then again, you know, depending on, on council's wishes, you can set a resolution to pick up the discussions in six months, nine months, you know, whatever, whatever your pleasure is.
Okay, moving on. So page seven, this probably goes to our attorney, I, there's simply a word missing, it says officials from the department, and it doesn't specify what department. I, H I?
Excuse me, department is defined, it's the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs.
Okay, because, I mean, there's lots of departments in here, so when it's just the word department?
That's the, that's the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs.
Thank you. Through me, there's a lot of, there's a lot of departments in here.
Yeah, you can see, if you go down to I, it says the department or the State Department of Community Health. So if it's a different department, it delineates it.
It's defined, yeah.
Okay. On K, just your attorney, if you can reread that, the language looks like it might be a little awkward. I just wanted to clarify on page eight, letter R, number three, all other advertisement or signs are prohibited on the premises, including but not limited to vehicle signs, sandwich board signs, portable signs, or banners. Does this include flags? Cause there's, or is flag considered a banner?
I'm going to defer to the attorney on that, I, I don't know.
We'll, we'll get you some information on that, that will have to be a matter of continued legal research. Unless Jeff can, Amanda's gotta looked, unless Jeff knows it off the top of his head.
I don't know either.
Generally speaking, when we're talking about a flag that's exempt, it's usually the American flag, the state flag of Michigan.
Fly the American flag anywhere.
When, when we're talking about other forms of advertisement, I think flag would fall within the purview of other advertisement, and we have really limited that to a wall sign.
There you go. So probably no flag.
Um, quick question. On page nine, letter B B, number three, says licensee shall provide to the city an IP address so the city can monitor the cameras. Just refresh my memory, was this in here before, or is that new, us having real-time access to their security, or is that in the state?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I've missed, it's number three.
B B number three?
B B number three.
Yep.
The real-time access.
Yeah.
Is that a new thing?
That is new.
Okay.
It is not a requirement of the state, but it is within the confines of the municipality to request such.
Do we have, or will we have, or is there a plan to have staff available to do this?
We have a police department that is on duty 24/7. We're not gonna, we will monitor this, and we will access this if we have need to access this. We're not gonna simply access it just on a regular basis.
Won't have somebody monitoring every facility.
They're crying. I, we're, we're not gonna be, yeah, we won't be monitoring all of their.
There's no facial recognition program coming in.
Is there, is there legal pres, can I ask, is there legal precedence for this in any other, is there legal precedence for this in any other realm of business?
I think there's, there are serious requirements.
It's a great idea.
Is there, I mean, is there legal precedence for this in liquor stores, in churches, in anything?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not yet.
But this is not an uncommon statement to Hazel Park. A lot of municipalities are requiring this. What I can advise is that the city has requested the operator to maintain 12 months of historical footage. Most municipalities are requiring three to six. However, I agree with the 12-month provision because most crimes are not identified until three, six, nine months after the fact. So to retain 12 months of historical footage is only in the benefit of the city.
I'm fine with 12.
I actually agree with that as well.
It's really a good idea. Maybe we should look at the gas stations with this. You know what I'm saying?
Like the green light.
Yeah, sort of like the green light program. Maybe we should make, mandate this for gas stations. Because with, every time you turn on, it's on the news, there's some kind of crime element in a gas station. Is, is it the new local hub for, for crime or something? I mean, look at the other day, couple weeks back, where they had three guys with a, heavy said guy with a gun and two other guys take this 2019, uh, 2018 or 19 Nissan from these two people. Then turn around, tug his coke while they're standing there.
We've been lucky. We haven't had a lot of gas station crime here in Hazel Park.
We have a very low crime, crime rate, but we need to be on the other side of preventative.
Yep, we can see if, uh.
Maybe see if it's an advantageous thing for us to pursue, Police Chief.
It's written down. We'll bring it up in staff meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so moving on, number four. So it says secured parking areas with secure decorative fencing around the entire perimeter and with a gated entry for vehicular traffic, blah, blah, blah. My concern is some of our facilities, so for instance, in the old Maytag building, or you've got spaces where they've got shared parking. I'm assuming this is something we can't really enforce on those locations?
Yes, we can.
Or, I mean.
I, I thought the initially, and maybe this is something to discuss with the council, 'cause I missed this. To be honest with you, that is something we really wanted to avoid the last time we passed something, is we didn't wanna look like Detroit and the ones on Eight Mile.
I mean, a lot of this is shared parking. I mean, we, we've got a lot of connected businesses. I, the Maytag building is.
For, yeah, yeah, for, for secure transit ma, makes sense.
For secure transit, this makes sense. It doesn't make sense for the other things. I would perhaps suggest that this statement be trained, changed to maintain a secure parking area, and that could be anything from lighting or security personnel. But they're gonna have to come to us with a security plan to show that their parking is safe. How about that?
Yeah, it definitely makes sense.
That makes sense?
With transport, and I believe our transport facility's already done that. So, but it just didn't seem like a practical.
It's, it's not.
All of these buildings are different, and we're dealing with a lot of small space and bumping with residential, so it's good that we can be flexible. That's one good thing that we have going for us, is we can be flexible with designs on these.
How about we say applicants must submit a secure parking plan?
Yeah, maintenance and secure parking.
You guys happy with that?
It must be, uh, must have, I think it must have a approval, a recommendation from the police department to.
Yeah, well, yeah, they, it's gotta be approved by us or we're rejected.
They should give us a recommendation.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, just for clarity purposes, so when I go back to write this, the applicants need to submit a secure parking plan. Is this applicable to every facility?
Every, every facility, obviously, secure transport and things like that, where we know that we've got storage there, or different grows they're gonna have. But a retail facility, I really don't want, you know, that kind of, it's gonna be ugly. It's a residential area. There are other ways to do this.
We don't want prison rules.
I don't want, no.
We have shared parking.
A security plan.
Right, but it, so if all applicants are required to submit a secure parking plan, then who makes the determination that it's?
The security part's there. What about just a parking plan? Security is one thing from secured parking.
Right, we want it, we want it secure and also a parking plan. We need to have sufficient parking. Everybody used to have.
I think the parking plan came across when we passed the, the.
I think Jen's point is, what, what, are we talking about, are we developing standards or not? Are we staying a secure parking plan?
We're gonna say a secure parking plan, that's a secure parking plan.
When we looked at the original passing of the medical, we looked at the parking plans, and we weren't all happy with all the parking.
No, I agree. That's fine, yeah.
There was, they were gonna make some changes to adapt those parking requirements.
I think we required photometric lighting as well.
But on the other side of it, we need to have a security plan for the parking lots and for the egress and ingress of the product coming into the building.
That's already, that's already.
Which is already there, but it needs to have a more, we don't, we don't have to have gated doors on everything.
Right, no, that's why I think we need to, we need to approve that on an individual basis, and that'll be part of their application process.
Okay, so yeah, just for clarification purposes, I'm, I'm sorry if.
We're not setting a standard, other than they must do a plan.
No, but at the recommendation of who would they be?
At the recommendation of the administration and the Hazel Park Police Department.
Okay, so at the recommendation of administration and the police, then the applicant would be required to put forth a plan to secure the perimeter?
That is correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
That was what I was looking for.
Got it all written now? You got all it's written now?
I got it. I got it.
Madam, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, next.
Real, kudos, thank you for adding in a knox box. Always a good thing to have if there's a fire. So I know we added in on page 11, letter P P, retailer, processors, and growers shall be required to provide a vestibule at the primary point of entrance exit of the facility with proper ventilation to further deter odor from emitting from the building. Councilman Webb, I know you suggested that. My question specifically, I, I completely, I support this, especially with, especially with grows and processors, but with the retail locations, so I don't know about all the facilities, but a lot of them have a lobby, and then they have another door that separates the products, so you already, so you've got a vestibule.
That area is the vestibule. If you have a four-foot area where the door swings.
Right.
Have a ventilation system, you can't exit until this door locks. You can exit out this door.
Right, but will that lobby?
Then the ventilation can suck.
There are actually ways to do it without a lobby too, depending upon how the ventilation system is designed and the airflow is configured. The main thing is, thou shalt not stink like weed.
When you walk out.
What if you did vestibule slash lobby?
Thank you. That's what I'm saying. Can it maybe be vestibule slash lobby if that lobby creates that, that barrier?
Be a barrier.
There, there's gotta be some form of barrier to avoid, whether it's a, an air barrier, or a lobby, or something.
So can we just add in to that, provide a vestibule or lobby to kind of, some of these spaces are, are rather small.
Right, I don't know that there's room to provide a vestibule and a lobby, or an alternative plan to assure that there will be no stink.
I believe every, every retail location has a lobby.
Well, vestibule is sort of like a lobby. I mean, it's very small.
Vestibule's very, yes.
Well, it depends on how you're willing to build it, I mean.
Wasn't some, I, I just, at least for some of them to have a lobby.
It all depends on the plan that they submit.
Well, and it, yes, it would be on, on that.
Subject to the plan, as to what size it could be.
Okay, so.
And you say?
Why don't we just say this? They need a plan to make sure that there is no escape of odors coming out of the, emanating from the facility. Let's, right, let's not get into the micromanagement of this. Let's see what, let's put it on them to come up with a plan. Thou shalt not stink, thou shalt not smell, thou shalt not create a nuisance.
And frankly, vestibule doesn't include a lobby in her Webster's definition of vestibule.
It does. Okay.
Well, thank you, thank you, never mind. I'm not going there.
Not alcoholic-free beer, alcohol beer. I mean, come out of either one. It's beer.
All right, um, so I noticed, moving on to Q Q, on page eight, we've got a clause that addresses people 18 and under, and on here, it's, a licensee must first acquire the necessary authorization to deliver to a patient caregiver person's 21 ages or old, or, or older. Is, is there, do we need to specify anything for people ages 19 and 20?
I believe the state law says 21 and older.
Right, they, if they're, if they're, if they're 18, 19, 20, they have to be a patient.
Okay, it's just, we have a clause that specifies people 18 and under, and I just, I wasn't sure if any of that was related.
If they're entering the facility, which I did find confusing also.
Okay.
Can you guys bring clarity to that with a revision of the law?
Is it, yeah, it says you can enter the facility if you're under 18, but apparently you can't if you're 19 or 20.
Do we want 18-year-olds to enter? Or is it a 21 and older?
Yes, you can work there at age 18.
Okay. I don't think under the, under the recreational, I think you have to be 21.
Now, if you work, you won't be.
Yes.
18-year-olds may be patients, so.
Right.
They may have a card, so then they could enter.
Well, it's just anybody that's a patient, yeah.
Okay. On S S for the, it just looks like there's a word or words missing. It says secure transporter facility shall not store of any kind. If we should specify what they shall not store?
I had a note here too.
Okay.
That it reads funny, um, secure transporters should not store.
We'll revise that. I don't know what that means. I don't even know what any of that means without that word.
It's a vehicle.
That was just a.
Obviously, secure transporters.
What it's basically, yeah, what it's basically trying to state is that.
You can't leave the pot in the vehicle.
Or.
I, I get what it was supposed to say, I understand, but it, it's missing.
But I, I had already noted that.
Okay.
Don't leave the weed in the car.
Yep.
Page, page 12, number F, it says failure to provide an incomplete application.
I already had this marked too.
Okay.
Where'd you go, Amy?
Page 12.
Page 12.
I'm going back to page 11 when I.
Yep. Spell check doesn't catch it if it's spelled right.
Yep, it's just the wrong word. Uh, page 13. Okay, so page 13, there's a lot going on. This is the application review page. I know we've already updated it from a recommendation by the, the city manager to a report from the city manager. On letter B, it says upon receipt of a report of the city manager, an application for a city operating license shall be reviewed by city council. After city council completes its review of the applications, the city council shall conduct a vote on each application, et cetera, et cetera. So my concern here is that there isn't really a, a step between receiving the report and narrow, and, and our body, the five of us, narrowing it down. And I'm concerned it's gonna have the problem where you kinda get the, the first nominated problem. It says we're supposed to vote on everybody.
Yeah.
But there isn't, um, I don't know.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'm also concerned that you shall conduct a vote on each application. Whether you choose to consider an application or not should be up to the city council. So I don't think you need to conduct an up or down vote on each application and say yes or no. I think that's up to the city council, whether they want to entertain anything. So I think that one's gonna need to be reworked.
Yeah, so it's just specifically that we have to vote on every application, or if it's, so we, it, I wanna allow us to have discussion.
All the stuff we have here, it needs to be a qualified application.
Right, the city council then may consider such applications as they wish for approval.
Right.
Because we have such, we have so, we have some requirements in which.
Right, absolutely. Some just maybe outright failures. I mean.
We wanna specify that there's requirements to these.
Yeah.
We'll get you some language on that.
Yeah, I think.
See where I'm coming from, Jen, Amanda, Jeff?
A hundred percent. The, the intent and, and the idea is to bring forth the applica, applicants that have satisfactorily met the application requirements.
The intent, I'm just concerned about that.
You're right, that's a, this is, this is a rewrite. This whole thing is a rewrite.
Yep, so it's bringing forth the qualified applicants based on the requirements.
For consideration by city council.
Exactly.
Who you may or may not, even if I bring you seven qualified applicants, you may not take a thumbs up or a thumbs down vote on all of them. You simply may choose to vote on a given number of them. That is your pleasure and your discretion. You are the governing body.
And that's what I would like this to reflect.
And if it's not a qualified application.
Your wishes are command.
We don't want to do 65.
All 75 of them.
It'll only be the, the, those that.
Put that at the bottom of the report, under a header, unqual, disqualified, unqualified.
That's an awesome note. She's already going through everybody else's concerns, so.
This is awesome.
May, may I ask a, a, a question for a point of clarity? Relative to the missing step, I see what you're referring to. How, how would the council like to review those applications? So we have, we have identified the qualified applications, and now they've come to you for your review. Is it, is it a special meeting? How do you wanna?
I would expect that I would give them a report on every application. And then I will rep, provide that report on every application to every member of the city council. And then they may, at their discretion, choose or not choose to bring those applications up and issue licenses. I think it needs to be at, you know, a meeting of the city council, obviously, where it's on the agenda.
Do you think we should, you think we should have a, like you, the city attorney, and maybe the mayor sit in, since I don't have a motionable, I can't make a motion, I can only vote on them?
I think I just give them to all of you guys, and you, you know.
We can narrow it down with the city attorney and so on.
I'll do what you ask.
You, you the city attorney, I don't care.
I just don't want to be the single bottleneck for all of this.
I, I think it should be up to the five of us to be able to narrow it down. I don't know that.
You wanna go through 65 applications again?
I think, I think you get the applicant.
Qualified, based on his report, I think we can start to narrow it down. I don't, that's the missing step, is how do we narrow it down? But I don't.
Because we have qualifications.
But I don't want.
Which I don't want to do. So I think, I think I give you all of them. I think common sense with the five of you is going to narrow it down. Okay, I think that I'm gonna give you a report on every applicant that I got. And I think that you're gonna be able to read those reports, and you're gonna discern that some of these applicants are, you know, some of these applicants are credible and make sense, and you're gonna come back and you're gonna say, I wanna consider these.
And maybe that's where we can just.
Right, I don't think we need to codify the ordinance.
We'll have a work study and narrow it down.
Yeah.
Yeah, that.
Then we bring the top amount of those to the, the top 10% to these council meetings and vote on that.
I like that idea. I like that.
That way, we kinda all have an idea.
We can have some discussion.
We all have open discussion about each applicant as, as a work study. Yeah, it's not a rush job, and we need to block out, if we, if it's anything like the last time, we'll have to block out four hours.
Well, and I, I just wanna really avoid that problem of who can make a motion first. So, that's, that's kinda what happens.
I do like that idea of a study session. That's what I'm thinking.
Just have, you have a study, you have a special.
All right, so we got that, folks.
You can't, for the record, you can't make decisions at a study session, so it'll be a special meeting, right. Believe if you narrow it down, you're making a decision.
Narrow it down as to.
You're making a decision if you narrow it down.
We'll have a special city council meeting and just narrow it down.
Okay.
Because we have to narrow it down somehow, and we have to have a four, five hour window to do it in.
Next.
We'll get the last time.
Um, so I just have a question.
Did you guys get that part, narrowing it down?
We'll, we'll come up with some ideas for you as well. Amanda said she's got some ideas. Okay.
My last one.
You sure?
Yes, it's my last one, I promise. Hey, we're being thorough, if you. Hey, we're being thorough, if you, if you want me to come in here and not ask questions.
No, you, you've raised, Amy, for the record, you've raised some outstanding points.
The number C, um, it reads permits are non-transferable, non-assignable, shall be specific to the licensee, and the location authorized, a transfer of an ownership interest in a business entity operating a facility shall be deemed a transfer hereunder, no person may operate a facility in the city without a operating license. Um, so my understanding is this is, nothing is transferable, um, so if somebody opens up their, their business, um, they can't go, okay, I got the license, and transfer it to their friend. But what about if there's a situation, I don't know if somebody dies?
If someone dies, then the remaining people on the license continue with the license.
Okay, so they can.
Right.
Let me ask, let, let me ask you a question, we need to clarify this language. You have person here, corporation, LLC, yada, 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 needs to be put in there.
A person is defined as such.
No.
By law, yeah.
Yes.
Under, under the MMFLA, MRTMA.
Right, these are all defined.
That's how a person is defined.
Corporation's a corporation, it's not a person.
But legally, that's, that's like a basic tenet of business law.
Yeah.
It is weird, but that's, it's a true.
It was a big thing with McRomney in two thousand and twelve.
It's a true statement, uh, uh, we wouldn't all BS you, Mike, it's the truth.
Okay, so if somebody, sorry to be morbid, if somebody dies, the remaining ownership is stuck with that business, they can't bring in somebody else to take on.
Here's the thing, in each case, you would, you would probably have to consider a couple of things on an individual basis. If there was a provision in the corporate bylaws, and someone will their interest to somebody, but that would be contingent upon them qualifying for licensure.
Okay.
So, I, I, I don't know that you need to include that in the ordinance because it's pretty settled law, how that works.
I got a question on the same.
Right.
Well, no, they just, they would also need to provide any kind of corporate bylaws and documentation, so.
But I also have a question based upon the same line of question here for the city attorney and the other attorney. Are we violating the rights of a business on the side of whether or not they can sell their business that they've built over five years? Do they have the right to say, I'm selling my business, and go to the city first and say, can I, can I get, if I sell my business, can I have this person qualify or for the business license itself? Whether they lose it the next year based upon their own merit is unknown, but that person should be able to have a road to an avenue to sell that business. So we don't, so we don't, because we could get in a bad situation by, by locking someone out, that they invested all their money in.
I mean, the, the way to sort of handle that really is, because it could be a concern, is basically that then they, you know, generally speaking, they're not transferable unless you present something to council of viable reason.
There should be a viol- uh, an avenue to transfer.
Yeah.
There, say they're there five years, they build a good business, they're a great company, and there's another company that wants to, they have to sell them.
Well, I mean, there are, like, I can't sell my, there's limits on, like, I can't sell my law practice too, and, you know, there's certain things that you can and can't do. I think Jen wants to speak regarding this, but also too, I mean, it's new territory as well, so I don't know, I mean, is there an existing case where someone is suing regarding their business status, their ability to sell, I mean, I don't think so, because it hasn't happened yet. But, no, it's a highly regulated area, that certainly I think it'll be upheld.
Not yet, and, so, so if I, if I can provide some feedback or insight on, on this provision, um, a lot of municipalities do this, I would say probably eighty to eighty-five percent of them do. The problem in this is that Amy is, or, um, I'm sorry, Amanda is correct, that you are, the, the property owner is now sitting on a piece of property that is worth three times more than any of that around it, and your, and their investment is no longer worth anything. So there, there are, in, in, in some areas, maybe a potential for them to argue that, that your, the investment they spent is no longer worth that.
Then the city gets sued.
And, but, but, there are, there are a handful of ways, um, and I even had some notes here to discuss with council myself based on this. So I'm, I'm gonna take it a step back based on conversation and where it started, with regards to somebody, uh, somebody's passing, who was an owner in a facility. That should possibly be on the city's due diligence to ensure that in the operating agreement of the LLC, or the bylaws of the corporation, that there are provisions within such governing documents of that entity that identifies what happens should somebody pass, or should somebody become incapacitated where they can't manage the facility. Right, there should be a succession clause.
I don't think that we need to look at that side of it as much as whether or not, we don't need to get in everybody's personal life here, okay? The point is, alcohol licenses, liquor control licenses, you have to apply for the liquor control license to be approved before you go out and buy a bar.
Right, so.
And it, and it needs to be the same process here, but, but we can say yes or no as a body.
You can.
Whether or not they're gonna be the ones that are gonna.
You can sell a liquor license, you can't sell a marijuana license.
I'm not saying.
So, what, what maybe you wanna do, and I think this goes back to what I said, right in the beginning, that they need as part of their application process, maybe to outline a succession plan. We know what we do with applicants, if they have one of the applicants that is, can't be licensed by the state, they either have to drop that applicant, or else, uh, you know, they don't get the license. So I think it would work something like this, that if the successor can't qualify for licensure, then their interest would be extinguished to death.
Yeah, I, I have a little bit more, um, relative to that, um, based on, you know, the transferability of these items, yes, you're correct, you cannot, um, transfer a liquor license without the appropriate approvals in the state and the city. That can also be implemented in a cannabis ordinance, where in order for somebody who is interested in purchasing a facility, you draft, or, or you have that, that applicant that's interested come to you with a pre-qualification and then apply to the city, pay the money to apply, be vetted by the city. Only if the city and the state both have a pre-qualification approval can the sale commence. So you're gonna have the opportunity.
We need to create a board to be the approving board, like the city manager, the police chief, and maybe the mayor at that point.
No, I don't, I know.
Say whether or not we're gonna approve the license.
I think it would go through the same, it goes through the same process.
Yeah, I think it just goes through the same process, they have to apply here, they listen, so-and-so is elderly, they want to move out of the business, he has a buyer, he's gonna have to apply for licensure.
I guess my whole point is, it needs to be clarified and completely spelled out, but we don't have no mistake as to how this is gonna work.
We're, yes, but maybe not totally in this ordinance, but yes, you are right, it does, we do need to have a succession plan.
So.
This is complex and may require some additional research beyond the scope of this ordinance. We can put some stopgap language in there for you this time, and that'll be a matter for continued research.
Let's keep it the way it is and we'll put, come up with a succession plan, twenty twenty.
It is a really good question.
Completely talk about it.
It's gotta be addressed.
Let's just put it in there as.
Yeah. What's that?
In the actual license, it can say some of this language too, to protect the city, so that when someone's attempting a sale, it's very clear.
Yeah, we still have.
The city has to approve it, yes. And.
Go ahead, Jen.
The applicant can't operate without a state and city operating license, period, they just can't. They can sell all they want, but until you give that applicant, or that person a license, they're not gonna operate.
That's right.
I'm thinking back to when we first talked about all of this, I'm sorry, Jen, the stuff on you. Um, I think that the, the reasoning behind this was we didn't want people applying for the license, getting approved, having a building, and then turning around, trying to sell it as a package.
You got it.
We wanted the people that were applying to be the ones we were dealing with.
I'm just looking, I'm looking out for the long-term people that have.
That is precisely why we set it up the way that we did, to avoid debate and switch and people coming in and doing that. So, I, I think, and I, I think we're on strong ground upholding that, uh, but we do need to do something in the event of a death.
Yeah.
Or a retirement or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is your succession plan? Yeah. Put that into the app- actual application. Good idea. We need to put that into the plan.
I can also add that as a requirement to the application, so you don't have to vet through, yeah, yeah.
And every, and, because they gotta reapply every year, so they can change the names if there's a problem.
Right.
If someone else was.
Yeah, that's true, they have to apply every year.
So they can update their list every year.
Right.
What, like in six months, yeah.
Right, you still gotta apply every year.
Yeah.
One more?
Yes, I'm done.
No, thank you. Does any other council people have any more questions?
We got one question, one more thing from Jen, on this transfer.
Yeah, and it's a question for the attorney.
Alright.
So there, there is, um, the transfer of stock in the ownership of a license. There is nothing prohibiting that in this clause right now. So, if you want transfers to be completely, um, eliminated, it needs to also speak to the transfer of the stock in the ownership of the facility. So.
You guys got that written down? You got all this written down, Amanda? Jeff, you got it written down? Because I'm not writing any of this down. Jimmy, you okay, Jimmy? You breathing, Jimmy? Hey, Councilmember Kierl has a question.
Some for Jen, for Jen and Amanda.
We have a question from the Councilmember Kierl.
Question for both Jen and Amanda, on that same page thirteen, C, the second sentence in that, "A transfer of ownership interest in a business entity operating a facility shall be deemed a transfer hereunder." And, could we add like, and is prohibited, I mean, that sentence doesn't quite, it's not clear.
Yes.
And if you wanna add in there what you were just talking about in stock and things, but.
Any other council people have any more questions?
Yes, Your Honor, um, most of it's already been covered, pages five and six with the numbers, um, when I, when I say the number forty-two, it is what I'm hearing from people that see this and go into shock, so the, we're going to define these and make it clear and clear up the language, that's a really good thing. Jake brought up a point with the town hall, and I just wanna add something, it's not necessarily on a page here, but our businesses that are doing construction now and doing work might wanna do some outreach in the neighborhood to, again, education and communication are important, that people need to know what's coming and not freak out when it opens up and they're out of the loop. So page thirteen, C, uh, we discussed that, and then pages eight, letter R, and page, I forgot which one, but it's on advertising, and this again goes to, I think the flag was discussed or a banner. Commercial vehicles that are parked, advertising in the lots are prohibited under multiple ordinances, and, uh, we need to address that. Pretty much everything else has been discussed at length.
Hey, any other questions on here?
Can I, can I clarify?
Literally, Amy, discussed everyone that I'd written down, and then we all chatted about it, which.
I wanted to clarify something Councilmember Holland said.
Okay.
So, um, with the, the vehicle signs, I know you've brought up the, the large sign at the south end, that's parked out there. This says.
It's on the truck.
It says, uh, prohibited on the premises, so that vehicle is not parked on the premises.
I know.
License is, so how?
It's, it falls under other ordinances, they're advertising a business in another location that I don't think they even own. Thank you, period, so.
I mean, I guess in theory you could have a truck riding down the street that's not transporting marijuana, that's advertising your business.
Yeah, this vehicle hasn't moved in five months.
As long as you're following state laws with regards to advertising cannabis, no, you are not gonna get pulled over.
No, you can't.
Okay. So, and you're, and you're also, you're also encroaching on First Amendment.
Yes.
They just can't park it in a facility that is a marijuana facility, but they can drive around all day long.
Sure, but the, the commercial vehicle shouldn't be allowed to park in, at the end of a residential and a commercial building that's vacant, and hasn't moved in five months, that's a violation of.
Jeff and I actually looked at this, we'll look at it again and see, we.
It's, it's a safety issue.
We determined that.
Can't see.
He may, he may need to.
It was the on-premises thing at first, but well, yeah.
Uh, reposition that there, so it's not sticking out like that and causing a visibility hazard.
And that's why I just wanted to clarify, is it, is it a, is it a visibility issue, or if it's on private property?
We went by and we looked at it, it's.
Depends on your vehicle.
Visibility issue, but it's out there, so, I mean.
And it hasn't moved in months, so that's, that's a big no-no.
We'll, 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 we'll address it.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, alright, I got one question since it's all been asked, one left. Going back to page eleven, RR, "Delivery shall only take place during operational hours of business." I wanted to say that they need to register the times of delivery, that they're gonna have a scheduled delivery with the police department on a consistent basis, or at least, at least give the police department an hour or two, a, a, a window which they're going to deliver these.
Like a repo situation?
Uh, here's why I don't want anything like that that's foible, because it creates a pattern of traffic and it makes the trucks.
I'm just looking for security purposes.
I think we could, I think we can address, uh, we've got a lot of security in this, I don't want to create a, a, a pattern of transit that makes the trucks, uh, a target. So that is the one area where this stuff is in transit that.
I was just thinking of security and also for no problem of, of people having.
Yeah, I wanna be purposefully ambiguous with respect to the time that those deliveries are gonna occur.
I also have some feedback relative to the state requirements, all the vehicles are required to provide manifests to the state for every delivery, every day, and have two or three alternative routes should there be an accident or construction, road closure. In addition, each vehicle needs to be real-time GPS, reporting back to metric.
Know where they are.
MSP knows where those vehicles are every second.
I, I just, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, and a lot of these guys that they're hiring are retired police officers, they're our reserve officers, they're active officers making a little bit of extra money, so it's.
So Jen has a couple clarity things to make sure that.
Alright.
We're doing the amendments proper.
I'm letting out before you do this, city council have any other questions? We're done with questions, we're gonna let Jen clarify, if we have to change, well, answer her change after she's done clarifying.
Just for sake of, of second reading, so there aren't any surprises, um, I just wanna go through a few of the, the items that I noticed for, um, purposes of clarity. On page one, um, under A, the definition of acts, we do not include the Marijuana Tracking Act of two thousand sixteen, which is significantly relevant in the whole overall process of the cannabis industry here in Michigan, so, um, I wanna make sure that, I will, I will put that into the definition, that we're encompassing that as well. Colocation, I'm sorry, page two, item J, colocation, a designated consumption establishment is also, um, able to co-locate with any of these facilities. I know that we're not looking at adding this into the ordinance, but by state law and definition, they can co-locate, so I wanna make sure that I also include that in the definition of colocation.
But just for clarity, that doesn't mean they can open the consumption establishment, it just means they can co-locate and, yeah.
Right, yes, yes.
Again, that's consolidation.
Correct, um, let's see, um, page four, EE, um, retailer, it reads, "Means a licensed commercial entity that purchases or transfers marijuana from a licensed grower and/or processor and sells or transfers marijuana." Um, I am going to further clarify that it is to, um, customers of twenty-one years of age and older. To delineate the provisioning center where it's patients, um, eighteen and up, or a retailer is the adult use and, adult use license, and it's for folks that are twenty-one and up. So I will further clarify that. On page five, item E, "All facilities are required to maintain dual licensure by the city and, by the state and the city." Um, I'm going to spell out what dual licensure means, so for, for this purpose, it means that you're required to hold a medical and the. a medical and the equivalent adult use license or vice versa. I will spell that out so it's clear.
Did you get our, you got our stuff too, right?
Of cour-, yes, yes. These are just things that I noticed when I went through and reread it. Page seven, item J, "Facilities shall have electrical fire, safety, plumbing, filtration, and waste disposal systems, which are compliant, appropriate, and consistent with best industry practices for the business being conducted." I am going to also include in here not only best industry practices, but compliant with state rules and regulations. Just, just to make sure that that's called out and very specific. On page nine, item BB, subsection one and two. This is more of a, a, maybe a discussion topic for council. Item one, or subsection one reads, "There must always be a security guard in place on the property of the facility." I'm sorry, for those that don't have it in front of you, this is for all facilities. So there must always be a security guard in place on the property of the facility. Subsection two now reads, "Secure transporters shall have a licensed security person on the property when marijuana is being stored at the facility."
I don't need the word license. Strike the word license.
Okay. And then what's the difference then between a security guard and a security person?
There is nothing.
So basically, the requirement is the same for all facility types. You must have a security guard in place. Now, is this?
Can I ask something on that, Jen? There must be a, you know, and this is all a security guard in place on the property of the facility. They're always, I mean, could we do it during operating hours for a retailer? You know, I mean, it's.
Previously, we had security cameras were allowed monitoring for some of that. I don't know where that went.
You don't want to have a security guard there standing there twenty-four-seven when there's, places closed.
I think you may in some instances. The administration would probably be comfortable with security cameras, depending upon the security situation that they have when the, when the facility is not in operation. I think for secure transport and things like that, I think you really need. If you're gonna store the product, you absolutely have to have security there. And I think that we will approve their security plan.
But, I mean.
I really think you have to have security while you're open.
Well, that I agree with. I, I, I mean, the secure trans, I think, you know, I, initially it was, because when we first passed the medical, they were just talking about actually storing it in the facility versus, because I don't think you could actually, they were discussing sort of different.
How much you were storing.
Yeah, basically, in there.
And based on, on what has evolved at the state with regards to the rules and regulations, especially surrounding secure transporters, they're, they cannot hold product for more than forty-eight hours. So they can't be a, a warehousing distribution center. They're not going to have product that is, you know, thousands of pounds at the available supplier ready of a, of a retailer. They have to tra-, they have to move the product within forty-eight hours. So, but they're not the only facility that stores cannabis or currency. Every retailer will, every grower does, every processor, every, all of the facility types store cannabis. So it's not limited to the secure transporter. And actually, the secure transporter might have less than all of them.
Jen, what are, what are the other cities doing with this? Are they requiring onsite security at all times?
It's fifty-fifty. Yeah, it's fifty-fifty, depending on, on the municipality.
For the first time being, let's see how it goes. Is this required for the first year? Yeah, we'll see how it goes. We can change it.
Wouldn't two be redundant then?
Yeah.
Well, so. I feel like, I feel like number two is more exclusionary so that it's like, it's releasing the, the transport facility for when they don't have product onsite. They're saying you don't have to have a person here, which absolutely makes sense. Because I don't need a person. I don't need to pay somebody to stand in an empty building. That's silly.
But number one says there must always be.
Correct. So I feel like number two is the exclusionary for that, number one.
Yeah, we can slash that one.
Okay, so we're gonna eliminate number two.
Number one.
Number one. We're eliminating number one? Yeah, me too.
I, I think that the point is, is that it's, it's keep one unless, sort of, or.
I feel like we need to edit number one for that exclusion.
Yeah, yeah, basically, you're saying unless the secure transporter does not have any product.
Into one, yeah.
Okay.
Do we have it?
Yeah, I hope.
Is this a requirement twenty-four-seven?
We, we had discussed the security plans, and I think the transport was the, the main one because of the quantity of the inventory, and you're saying it's less than that. But, but we had talked about video surveillance twenty-four-seven.
Absolutely video surveillance.
Do that.
Absolute video surveillance twenty-four-seven.
Having, having a person there that whole time is.
Having a person is redundant.
How, okay, so.
Only when open.
Why don't we, well, why don't we say this? Why don't we require it when open, but leave it up to the Hazel Park Police Department and the administration to determine any additional physical onsite security.
Security person when the operation hours.
Okay? And put that other, uh, uh, thing in there, because if somebody keeps getting hit after hours, then we're gonna mandate that they put in a, a security person there.
Mr. Gloveter, we talked about this before as well, that these, there's a huge investment here. And I have a feeling that the business owners are going to take every necessary precaution, probably anything above and beyond what we're gonna require.
You would, you would think, but as you well know, we have all scratched our heads many times at the stupidity of some businesses.
And I want to be clear, I want to be clear for a security.
Their investment.
Go ahead. Don't let them talk.
Okay, same section BB. Now I'm on to subsection three. This is speaking to the alarm system twenty-four-seven, as well at the alarm systems and security cameras twenty-four-seven. So it further reads, "The licensee shall provide to the city an IP address which provides the city with real-time access to all security camera feeds." Now, we talked about this, and we, we discussed that it's not necessarily gonna be monitored twenty-four-seven by the city.
It will not be.
My question is, does the, when we refer to the city, does that also encompass law enforcement, first responders? Who is the city in this?
I would say that the city is any component of the city of Hazel Park, including law enforcement, uh, fire department, uh, building department.
Okay.
Right.
Well, city is defined as the city of Hazel Park, but we don't define.
The city, city of Hazel Park and any of its component departments.
And any of its.
Any of its component departments.
Are there privacy concerns with Jimmy having access to a twenty-four-seven feed of, of a business?
We're not gonna have twenty-four-seven feed access to the restrooms or things like that. So there will be areas there that will be private, obviously, but again, this is a public, this is a public business. So.
I mean, you have to have a license to go in, which is why, sure, it's, it's, it's public, but it also feels.
You don't, because this is for adult use, yeah.
We're.
It should be.
They get a nine-one-one call, they can go.
You, you get a nine-one-one call.
That's nine-one-one. I'm talking about the, you know, if someone is, you know, is there any issues with.
Yeah, they just want to watch.
Yes.
There should, there should be a trigger or a reason for the city to access this, and that should be defined.
Or at least a policy within the city that.
You don't need to put that in the ordinance. That's, but we can give you something like.
A policy that restricts who has access to this.
We should have protocols for this.
Because we're not gonna be, I will tell you, we are not going to be monitoring this twenty-four-seven, and no one should have the expectation that they're getting twenty-four-seven monitoring from the police department. This is ninety percent an after-the-fact thing. Or if we have an issue that's in progress, we get a nine-one-one or an alarm, they can access that. We have this with the school district now.
And that's fine. I'm just saying maybe a policy to restrict who has access.
We have this with the school district.
Now, I asked if there is any precedence for this, and you said no.
There are.
It is with the school district.
Okay, go ahead.
Marijuana.
Continuing.
Uh, page number eleven, item A, "Each applicant requesting for authorization to operate a facility within the city." I'm gonna keep going on. It's the last sentence in that paragraph. "All applications shall be submitted in compliance of the Acts, State of Michigan Marijuana Administrative Rules, as amended, and future amendments, and city ordinance." I'm sorry, it says it here, "and city ordinance." I had noted here, we need the city of Hazel Park, but it says city ordinance. That one's done.
Amy would have caught that, don't worry.
Uh, we talked about the transfer of stock.
Are you done?
Nope, sorry. Item number, or I'm sorry, page number fourteen, item J, subsection one, under, this is penalties, "Any violation shall be a misdemeanor and may be punished by a fine of not more than fif-, uh, one thousand five hundred dollars and/or imprisonment not exceeding ninety days." Is there a violation in a monetary value that per day shall not exceed? Or is just the overall violation fifteen hundred dollars? Or is this a, is this something that needs to be looked at from a, a, a legal lens, if you will?
Usually how they were written would be, "Any violation shall be a misdemeanor, punishable by a fine of not more than fifteen hun-" I mean, that's usually how it is written.
Right, those are discretionary by the judge. That's your standard misdemeanor penalty right there. Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there, so it's not a per day not to exceed type instance? I mean, if they continue to violate day after day.
That is something we, because it's.
Obviously.
Any of it.
Well, it could be the discretion of the prosecutor.
Right?
Yeah, we already have.
After so many misdemeanors, it turns into.
This is your, right.
After a some point.
They're consolidated anyways, so it's. Right. We've done that for, we know how to do that.
Happy with fifteen hundred bucks a day, I mean.
Right. Each day could be.
Okay, go on.
On page fifteen, under part three federal law, in, in this paragraph, it keeps, it refers to general ru-, rules, referring to the state administrative rules. I'm just changing that to administrative rules. Where it says general, I'm changing it to administrative. Part, page fifteen, part.
Part three federal law.
So the fourth and fifth line down, it refers to general rules that are called administrative rules. And that is, that is all of the items that I noticed that you'll see changed in the second reading.
Then we'll have another discussion again.
I love it.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, people like Jen and Amanda and Jeff and Jimmy, who have been writing all these changes down, will consolidate these things. We will bring them to you for second reading. Now, you have a motion and you have a support.
Any dissension? Any more discussion?
Jimmy remembers.
Going once, going twice. We have the motion. It's passed for the first reading. Towards commissions, hearing no one, tabled items, none, new business. Anybody got any new business?
I did a real quick one, super quick, I swear.
Alright.
Sorry, guys. So, uh, the clerk was able to put the packet for this meeting on the website, which I thought was very helpful. It's something I've been asking for repeatedly for several years. So I'd just like to make an official motion, hopefully with the sort of my, support of my colleagues up here, to just make it official that we need to place our meeting materials on the website before every council meeting. Support.
We have a motion with support. Any discussion?
I still want mine hard copied.
We'll get you the hard copy. No, there doesn't change.
It's for the public.
We'll put the, the, right, that stuff that is public, we'll go. Right.
Any dissension, discussion? Alright, that's a good motion. Anyone else, new business?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
There's nothing on here for old business, so it's gonna be a kind of a combination here. Given what happened last Friday, I hope everyone understands why I've been beating this. We need a commercial property inventory to death. We need to have a better handle on what's going on in our businesses. As I said earlier, we have license holders and applicants that have spent a small fortune to do business here, and illegal competition is not only bad and harmful to them, it's not good for the neighborhood, and I want to get a handle on that. And, and I would like to see, maybe by the next meeting, and I'm assuming we're gonna have a second reading, so we'll have a meeting again this month, I'd like to see a list of the licensed businesses along John R. And I would appreciate also, under old business, an update on the property by me that was raided again. The people, I'm on my third set of tenants this year that have moved in without a stick of furniture. So I don't know what's going on in there now. And under new business, Jake, you, I really think that you, as the planning commissioner, the work you put into that, you brought some great insights, and I think a town hall would be something incredibly useful. And I'd, I'd like to see, maybe you could coordinate with that, because you, you got a spark for that. That's all, sir.
Anybody else? New business? Communications from department heads. Any department heads want to come up?
Mr. Mayor, my police department has some, and also Tom Jones as well.
Why don't we just call the whole back row?
They will, they will briefly and concisely update you.
Yeah, this will be quick. As most of you know, our K-nine unit is in a contest nationwide. They're one of thirty finalists to win a Chevy Tahoe. You can vote daily. It's put on by vested interest, and it's a great opportunity. So vote every day, please. Community watch meeting next Tuesday at the high school. Ryan Forrester and our animal protection officer Jennifer Thomas will be there, talking about Paw Patrol. And if you see something suspicious, call us. If somebody in your backyard at two-thirty in the morning, call us when that happens. Five hours later isn't gonna help us too much. We did have a couple of cars unlocked with some stuff items, so please lock your cars and valuable items. Don't leave them in your car. And thank you to Tom Jones for lights in the park.
Chief.
And, oh yeah, we're in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month with our pink pages.
Also, we have a new Facebook page for the Hazel Park Police Department, so I want to thank Chief and a couple of people in my office, Linda and Jared, for their assistance to him in getting this thing up and running. So thank you, Chief, for taking the initiative and doing that. Good stuff. But remember, if you've got a problem, do not post it on Facebook. Call the police department or call nine-one-one. We do not monitor Facebook twenty-four-seven for the umpteenth millionth time. Because you tag the city manager, and your house is on fire, doesn't mean I'm going. I, I, I get my tag notifications to an old email account that I check once every two days. So unless I happen to be on and looking for it, you're gonna have to wait. So call the emergency numbers.
Chief, also, I saw that you guys did take the opportunity to receive that training for animal first aid and CPR. Would you mind talking about that? I'm gonna make Chief Story talk about it too a little bit.
Uh, yeah. Not all of our officers, obviously, some had to work the road, but I was able to get three of our platoons in there for the animal CPR and first aid. So that was, it was awesome, and I suggest it for any dog owner. It was really good. I liked it. And thank you to my assistant, Kim Duberg, with the Facebook page, and everybody else that's younger than me in the department.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good work lately. I'm so proud of you.
GPW Director, Tom Jones.
Mayor and council, a couple updates. Nine Mile Project, it's, everything's on schedule so far. A lot of the work done. If you've noticed, the sidewalks, all the handicap ramps have been reworked. A lot of brick work. It's taken a little bit of time, but as soon as that's done, they're looking in the next two weeks to switch the barrels over, so you will now be driving on the outside lanes, so they can work on the inside lanes. But everything's going pretty smooth so far. The weather's been holding up, knock on wood, and we'll keep rolling. John R project has started on the north end. I'm sure anybody that's drove through, there's new headaches, new barrels. But they've done a lot of saw cutting, and they look at removing a lot of concrete Wednesday and Thursday, and actually start pouring new concrete by Friday, so they're. and actually start pouring new concrete by Friday, so they're kind of on a fast track and get it rolling for us. Um, Cadillac Paving, the company that did south end of John R from A-Mount of the freeway, still is coming in. They're scheduled for this month to come in and repave Woodward Heights from the rec center to South Chrysler Drive, and also Woodward Heights from Patel to Hazelwood. They promised they'll be in here this month, so we're holding our breath. Um, also, we started our sidewalk program. We are focusing on Towis, Vassar, and Kayuga. Um, as Chief said, we did get our new lights up at Scout Park, so anybody drive by at night, the, uh, the new place that actually glows like a stadium now, so looks pretty good. Um, also, works began today or, or yesterday, putting, uh, new metal roofs on the pavilion at Scout and the, um, bathroom. So a lot of progress in town, and everybody, please be patient. A lot of barrels, a lot of constructions, but we'll get through it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, I'll also praise Tom, he's been very busy as well. We've kept him busy with all these projects. Again, I want to let everybody know, I think there's some misconception that they think that the road diet is causing all of this backup. And that's really not the case. The problem is twofold. One, I seventy-five's under construction, and you've got a lot more traffic trying to avoid that construction. Soon they will learn that's a maladaptive strategy and go someplace else. Uh, second, you've got the choke points because of the road construction at Nine Mile and John R, and now Woodward Heights and John R. So it's a function of mathematics. You can only get so many vehicles through, uh, a given timeframe when the light changes. So whether you have, this is basic math, so whether you would have done the bike lanes or not, you would still have about the same weight. So, uh, it's just a function of fact.
Very briefly, I just wanted to mention, um, that we've, and the city manager can speak to this, but since we've had the lights there and the rules have been put up, thank you to this body and the rec board, we have seen a dramatic decrease in issues over at the park, if I'm.
Yes, absolutely. I want to thank, uh, all of the departments involved with that. But, uh, the number of complaints that we have about conduct at the park are way down. The rules are working, the enforcement is working. Uh, we understand that some of the teens feel left out, so I'm currently in discussions now with the Sutire Foundation, and I think they're going to do a facility for the teens, uh, soon as maybe next year. So, uh, that's, we're going to look for that, so give them a little bit more autonomy and hopefully, uh, give them something to do as well for play equipment that's designed to be age appropriate. So, but again, big thank you to the police department, big thank you to DPW, everybody involved, uh, in helping make that park safer. Chief Story.
Great event, Sunday.
Thank you for everybody that came and participated, we had a great time. We loved doing it for everybody. Uh, just one thing I'd like to mention to you, we, uh, were awarded a FEMA grant through the Assistance of Firefighter Grant System for a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for new SCBA's for our department. Um, the current packs we have are, were purchased at nineteen ninety-seven. They will be, uh, uncompliant at twenty twenty, so this couldn't have come at a better time. Um, I did a lot of haggling with some dealers, and I was able to get a, a price where we're about five thousand dollars above the grant price. So five grand out of pocket for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of equipment, so.
Good, great.
Again, and I praised, uh, you know, Brian and Tom, and I will praise Rich Story as well. What a great chief he is, and he's always working to try to find additional monies and to properly allocate his resources. We have the, uh, what's it called, the machine that, uh, does CPR?
Our thumper.
Yes, we have the thumper here. You read in, uh, you read in that other, a few other cities went to a little orientation, and they were seeing one of these machines, uh, demonstrated. Most of the area departments, they don't have one of these.
No.
We're the only one that's got one.
Right.
This machine saved the first, uh, four or five.
Five, first five people.
Five people that we put on this machine that had a heart issue, this machine saved. So the other cities don't have, we've got this, and that's, uh, uh, his ability to innovate and, uh, to find these types of equipment that really make our residents much safer. So thank you, Chief.
Oh, thank you.
There are people walking around today, living lives, spending time with their families, because he was proactive to get that machine.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Can you?
Stay loaded, sorry.
I was just going to say, have the, um, has the fire department been able to take advantage of that training?
No, we have not. I've mentioned it to my guys, we're setting up, uh, I talked to Tom, he's my, uh, one of my MS guys. I don't know if he's reached out to her yet for a date.
Okay.
Uh, but it has been talked about, discussed, we just haven't pulled the trigger on it yet.
Okay, thank you.
We do have CPR masks and what, or I should say, O two masks and what, for pets, and we're all pretty good at it, but we definitely could use the.
Right, free training is free training.
Free training.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Tell the rest of the guys over there, great job with all the kids on Sunday, and every, I know every day you guys do a good job, but.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it was a great event, Chief, thank you, everyone.
No problem, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads want to come up? No? Okay.
Tim Young doesn't want to move.
City Attorney, want any comments?
No.
City Manager.
Michigan system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken. I want to make sure that I say it, because they said I didn't say it a few meetings ago, I think I did, but anyways. Uh, I want to thank every, no one can say that the city council doesn't work. You saw that, you saw it, if, probably there's more people sitting in here watching it that are watching it at home on TV, but you, it's not, okay.
Uh, TV.
Okay, well, we'll make sure we get it up.
I was told it was live streaming.
Yeah.
Okay, go on.
Maybe just one of the cable, we have a problem with one of the cable companies sometimes.
Says right now, we're live.
Yeah, we're live.
All right.
So, uh, but anyways, uh, you see inaction, going over things painstakingly, item by item. Uh, and you see the council working on your behalf to try to create a good situation with, uh, this new industry. So a lot of work went into it today by all five of them, a lot of work went into it by my staff. Ahead of time, it remains a work in progress, and it will remain a work in progress even after, uh, this is passed, because I'm sure there's some things that we didn't think about. And then finally, a public discussion today, uh, I got to respect a man who, when presented with the facts, looks me in the eye and apologizes. So, uh, I wish that gentleman who's no longer here a good night, and, uh, I'm glad that I was able to add clarity and answer his questions.
Councilwoman Sullivan.
I want to thank everybody for staying through this lovely, long, informative meeting. Um, I think that getting to see this portion of what we do, um, weekly, this is obviously a much, a really large, heavy task, um, but it's something we're really looking forward to doing, and we're all enjoying participating. But it's really nice to see people come out and want to see what goes into these ordinances, um, because it's hours and hours of work by us, put upon hundreds of hours of work by the people that bring it to us. So, um, I want to thank everybody for enjoying this lovely discussion we had today. Um, and I want to remind people that we have a, a tree planting coming up, October nineteenth, um, eight forty, eight forty-five in the morning. Uh, what parks are, what parks are?
Kennedy Park and Felker Park.
Thank you. Kennedy and Felker.
Kennedy Park, and then we'll disperse a group over to Felker.
Perfect. Um, and that's part of the, um, the two hundred year anniversary of Oakland County, for tree planting.
And we, we may actually be having a park dedication too with the Sutire Foundation, so I'll keep you guys all informed about that on that same day.
Um, big thank you to the DPW for always keeping us informed, getting our roads back on track. Uh, the Chiefs, both Chiefs, uh, thank you for coming and participating, and thank you for the, um, the fire, uh, open house this weekend. I drove by and then, um, went back home because I was a bit emotional about being there. So, um, I just want to thank you and apologize that I didn't have the emotional fortitude to go in this year, but I'll be back next year. And that's it, everybody have a safe weekend.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. Long night. Um, and this is how sausage is made, we, we put a lot into this tonight. I, I ran out of time, and I'm not one to, I complain about last minute additions to the agenda, but I was hoping that we could have a resolution declaring the month of October is Bullying Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Hazel Park. And I believe we're going to have a second meeting, I brought a sample resolution, um, and it's not just for children, it's also for adults. So hopefully this is something that we can do next time. Um, it's pretty basic and it's pretty important. Um, so I also wanted to share that the Michigan Municipal League, I'm grateful that we participate in this opportunity. Uh, there's training throughout the year. The conventions are an opportunity for us to network with our peers in other municipalities and to see what they're doing right and, and get ideas and bounce ideas back and forth. And also, there are breakout sessions that are incredibly informative and really engage what we're dealing with. And the one that I, I really want to discuss too, and I'll be quick, because I know everybody wants to go, was the census. And Mayor Webb and people from Southfield were the ones that brought up that we have a whole generation of folks that may not have computers or be computer savvy, and that also with economics, there's a lot of people that do not have internet or computers, and the mayor is, is already on top of this and making sure that we address this, that every single resident is counted. It's, it's important, we need the dollars, we need, we need to make sure that everyone's counted. It's so important. And the other one was on human trafficking. And I had an amazing conversation with Farmington Hills Councilmember, councilmember, very important that word, Teresa Rich, prior and after the meeting. And human trafficking is something that people, you think sex, and it's not just that. And it's not just in sleazy motels, and, um, you know, it's, it's everywhere. Sometimes it's in the family home, the, the internet has made it easy to exploit anyone. And one of the things they really honed in on, and I'm hoping that going forward, we can, we can really address this, is trafficking economic. And if you think about it, the people that are working on the landscaping, or maybe at the nail salon, they may have come over here legally or illegally, doesn't matter. They're promised that they're going to go to school or be a nanny or have some kind of a trade, and they wind up working twenty-four seven in a shop and then going back and sleeping at a shop owned, or location owned by the person that they're working for. And every dime they have goes towards that. So it is a very real issue. Uh, Madison Heights were able to come in and assist something, and unfortunately, I, I've said it several times now, I saw this firsthand. And it is vile. Um, so I hope everyone has voted for Lando every single day. Um, thinking about exploitation, I think Lando is being used a little bit here, and his brother Lester's getting a jealousy case. He's, he's got the jellies. Um, finally, I think we need to have an executive session, um, soon, not individual briefings. Uh, I found myself looking into, um, possibly hiring an attorney, and I stumbled across something that was filed in federal court, I believe, back in March. And I've not been advised of this, and I think we need to find out what's going on. And I guess with that, I would say thank you all for sticking it out tonight. Appreciate every single one of you, and y'all have a safe evening getting home.
Councilwoman Carroll.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were all attending the Michigan Municipal League Conference last week. I had a moment of personal pride and pride in this body when I was at the, uh, Michigan Municipal League Foundation fundraiser, and they scroll a list of all the donors in this entire body, including the city manager. All six of us were up there as donors to the Michigan Municipal League Foundation, and I was very proud of that. Um, what the Michigan Municipal League Foundation does is provide some, uh, scholarships to elected officials who may not otherwise be able to afford the conferences. So all six of us were there on the list, put, putting our money where our mouth is, um, supporting the Michigan Municipal League. In the, uh, immortal words of Tom Solomon, if you love someone, tell them. If you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. And, uh, don't forget to remember, don't forget to vote November fifth. Have a great night.
Mayor Proton.
I'm usually, I'm usually not one for a lot of words, uh, but I am today. So please bear with me. Um, so I want a quick shout out to Serene with Parks and Rec and Tom Jones. I was up at, uh, my personal favorite park, uh, which is Green Acres Park, which is the park located by my house. I saw we have a beautiful new paint job, um, the building is now blue, uh, along with the Tickle Monster mural, um, and a pretty new bike rack. It made me very excited to see a bike rack in the park. Um, so thank you for that. Um, thank you to Chief Story, I went to the fire open house. Um, your firefighters are amazing, they put on a great event for everybody. They let me hold the, the jaws that cut open the car, and I, I am weak, I cannot lift it, I am so impressed. Uh, also, that car just came apart like butter. Um, so it's good to see that these amazing tools that we have save lives, um, and really help our firefighters. So, but it was a great event. Um, went to the, uh, Michigan Municipal League Convention in Detroit. Uh, this is probably of, of all the conventions I've been to, I go to two a year for the last couple of years, um, as well as some additional conferences that I attend on behalf of my, my day job. This is probably my favorite conference, and, and I, I feel like some of us might agree. The, the breakout sessions that we were able to go to on, on human trafficking, the census, really important issues that are happening here in the city that affect the residents here and everybody. Um, they really just hit the nail on the head with some of these great sessions. Uh, so I think all of us are going to be able to bring back some great ideas for the city. I'm really looking forward to implementing them. Uh, one of my favorite outcomes of that was after the Human Trafficking Task Force ran into Rosalind Gaffstein, who is a council member for the city of Madison Heights, as they went through the presentation on human trafficking of like all the red flags, it was like Madison Heights, Madison Heights, Madison Heights. They, they have all the red flags, they have a major problem, they've already had some busting for human trafficking. Um, I really learned it's not just sex trafficking, it's labor trafficking. It can be in our neighborhoods, it can be in your businesses, and it doesn't know borders. We visit other communities and these people, maybe they work in Madison Heights, but they live in Hazel Park. So Rosalind came up with the idea, uh, she'd already been working on a presentation, uh, for their crime commission to present to residents about human trafficking, so we can all recognize the signs of human trafficking. Um, and she asked if we would like to work with Madison Heights to bring that presentation to not just Madison Heights, but to Hazel Park residents as well. And then we spoke to the city of Ferndale, and the city of Ferndale, they're going to be getting back to me, uh, later this week. They're also interested in, in expanding this presentation and making sure that, that everybody understands what's, what's going on. So I think it's great that we're going to have this wonderful regional cooperation that has come out of this conference. Um, sorry, excuse me. So also wanted to say, anybody who has to leave early, I, kudos to everybody who has stayed. If you have to leave early, um, we try to livestream on TV. Not everybody has cable, so not everybody can watch it on TV. We do try to put them up on YouTube. I did check the website, we're a little behind. If we can please make sure to, to keep the, the website updated, because the gentleman that left here today, he might be able to, you know, actually see the responses to his questions on, on YouTube later. So if we can please try to make sure we keep that updated, and everybody know, um, you can always go to YouTube if you missed something today, or if you really want to re-watch this lovely discussion. Um, want to say, uh, just for anybody, we had a really long discussion today. Normally our meetings are not this long. We all put on a lot of work behind the scenes. Normally I spend hours on the phone with the attorney, with the city manager, saying, I like this, I don't like this, fix this, make this happen. Everything that goes on that we do as council people does not happen at this table. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that we do, and to accuse anybody at this table of not doing that work is inappropriate. So that was just something that came up online. Um, and last, mental health had a huge win today. House Bill forty-three twenty-five, and I'm going to get emotional because this is important to me. House Bill forty-three twenty-five passed unanimously, protecting over ten thousand licensed counselors in this state. They provide needed. Sorry, I, I work, several of my closest friends are LPCs, um, and I've been harassing Representative Whittemore nonstop. Um, he's the one who sent me the photograph today showing me the, the unanimous win. Um, this protects counselors who are not necessarily psychiatrists or psychologists. We all know we have a mental health crisis in this state and in this country. We depend on these, these counselors to provide those services, because typically it is a six month plus wait for somebody to get the needed help. This was literally a matter of life or death. If people don't get the help that they need, they may commit suicide. This is veterans, this is the homeless, this is our youth. This affects everybody, and I'm sure everybody in here has somebody who uses some type of mental health service. So I'm just very excited. If you have not reached out, um, our state representative is Jeremy Moss, um, also harassed. State Senator Jeremy Moss, um, it. It is, this is going to the vote, they're pushing this very quickly because Laura was trying to take away the right of these people to diagnose and to do their practice. So this is going to be pushed to the Senate on a, for a vote on Thursday. So we're trying to move this very quickly through the legislature to make sure that these people get to continue practicing their, their mental health services, providing this much-needed service to everybody, bringing it into compliance with the state mental health code. So this is very important, if you haven't reached out to your representative, please do so. And like I said, mental health is, is a huge, 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 huge thing for everybody, it's very personal for me, so very excited that we had a huge win today.
Mr. Mayor, to, to piggyback on that, and this may not be a big deal to a lot of people, but, yeah, I obviously, obviously I have a psychologist's license, and I still maintain my license and take my community ed. I never had a problem with LPCs diagnosing and doing those things. I think I know where this did come from, though, because I sat on the Board of Psychology for the state of Michigan for four years, I was a gubernatorial appointee, and I got a sneaking suspicion that this came from some of...
We're trying to not point fingers.
So I know, I pretty much know where it came from, but I just want you to know that, that I definitely worked with a lot of LPCs, and they did a fantastic job. They were some of the best clinicians I worked with sometimes.
I'm done. Thank you.
We good now?
And wait a minute, I'm going to, one more thing before you close the show, Mayor. I want to remind you all, we did a fantastic program on human trafficking through the Hazel Park Community Coalition, I got to give Jared Gageos some kudos on this. We brought in somebody that Jeff Campbell knows well, his sister, Elizabeth Campbell, who is the Clinical Professor of Human Trafficking with the University of Michigan. She is absolutely one of these state's top experts, if not the state's top expert. So I would hope that when we have our second, and it would be our second, it would be the first for Madison and Ferndale, when we have our second presentation, we bring her back because she is an extraordinary expert who knows this subject inside and out, so. Hazel Park, want everybody to know, we did it, we did it last year. We'll do it again, and I'll be happy to cooperate with Madison Heights and Ferndale and make sure that we do our best to suppress this evil.
Glad everybody could stay, welcome, and I want to wish my daughter her happy 22nd birthday tomorrow. She just left, but I was trying to get... She'll be 22. And I do want to say thank you again for staying out. We do do a lot of due diligence here before we get to this table. We do research and we do read a lot. Sometimes we don't read as much as we should, but other, another day, other times we read more than we ever thought we should on certain issues. We try to make sure that we have the proper language before it gets to this table, before we approve and amend ordinance or create a new one. We've done this in the past, and we're still doing it every day, we, every time we come up here, there's always something going on. The roads are getting done, the park was done this year. We have a lot of new home redevelopment here, we have a lot of new basements being poured, a lot of new houses being built. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We have some new businesses coming to town, we also have some other ones being built on Nine Mile as well. We have some commercial property all over the place that's being redeveloped. We're trying to diversify our business industry as well as create, we already have the diversification in our communities of different age groups, different races, and different sexual orientations within our community. And I think that's what all the, all of us really want, is inclusiveness, and feel like we're all important, no matter what you believe or what you don't believe. And I believe I'm going to close this meeting that way. Have a good night. Motion to adjourn.